All right, aloha, aye, aye, everyone, and welcome to the downtown Chinatown Board Meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at six o'clock. My name is Ernest Cavallo, and I'm your chair. We'll start online. Can you go ahead and present yourself, Kevin?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Lai, and thank you for joining either online or in person tonight.
All right, thank you. Then we're gonna start with Ross.
Hi, everyone. Ross Isokane. Thank you for coming. I'm Robert Armstrong.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Sturgis.
Good evening, Chulon Shubert Quoc.
Good evening, Sean Fitzsimmons.
And then our assistant here is Camila. All right, so before we get started on this, I'd like to make some, a couple of changes to the agenda. So I'd like to actually be able to add Irene from DTS for the Honolulu City Lights. It was a misinterpretation on my part. I thought they wanted to come in November, but they actually want to start today. So I would need the board's approval to do that. Be advised also that Hawaiian Electric Brendan Bailey had talked to me, and they're not complete. They're almost complete, but he doesn't want to come until they're complete, so he will not be coming. And Metal Kakuah, the opening of the Edwin Thomas Building. Greg Payton just sent me an email stating that he forgot to let me know that they're not ready to present. He needs more time, and he'll get hold of me. So those two will be off the list tonight. So I would need a motion to be able to allow Irene from DTS for the Honolulu City Lights Parade to be able to present. And I would like to be able to do that. Can I get a motion?
Point of clarification, Chair. Because of the fact that the agenda is always set, would it be just more advantageous to have that presentation during public concerns and give her extended time?
We could do that, but in public concerns, there's, we cannot answer the questions, sir. Ask those questions. But I did talk to NCO, and NCO said that it was all right. Camila, you wanna?
Yeah, so since DTS wants to share their announcements and their flyer, it's best to add it to the agenda for them to speak about it, and you guys can add questions or ask questions.
So we're told that it is under, that Sunshine Law will allow this. Go ahead, Board Member Shubert Quoc.
Yeah, I was second, and I think you need two-thirds vote to make the change.
Yes, we do. Yeah, so we talked to OIP, and NCO bought it today, and they says, yes, we could go ahead and add them so long as we have two-thirds of votes. So that means we would need six votes, sir. Right, so she's second.
If we had the first motion.
Oh, oh, do you have the reason?
Second motion.
Do we need to discuss this, or do we want to go straight to a vote?
Point of clarification, one more time. If this vote should not pass, could we put her under public concerns?
Yeah, and that'll, and that'll be only two minutes. That's it. That's, that's the point. You have to be fair to everyone.
Okay, but I was thinking about how fair this, this new policy is to those who've gone before and the changes we've tried in the agenda and never have failed, never have passed the pass.
No, we've actually added before. Yeah.
Can you give one?
Yeah, so we, when we used to be back down at Honolulu Tower, we have added before to the agenda. Listen to the agenda. This is something that goes on every year.
All right.
And you're civilized, and so I will take full responsibility over this, okay? So I'm just asking, everyone, we have a new board member that just joined us. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, everybody. My name is Kevin McDonald. It's nice to see a nice crowd here today. Thanks for coming out, everybody.
All right, so Kevin, so just, just so you know, Kevin, the miss, Hawaiian Electric and Metal Kakuah will not be presented today. There was a misclassification on my part. I thought that DTS Honolulu City Lights Parade wanted to be on the agenda for November, so I didn't add them to October agenda. They're here, and they would like to be added to it, so that motion has been made to add and second, okay? You caught up? Kevin Lai, you have a question?
Chair, I have a, thank you, Chair. I just would ask the board to review in detail neighborhood plan Section 214-111C, subsection 2. If the intent is to convey information to a significant number of folks that live within our jurisdiction, then I believe that we are fairly prohibited from adding the agenda to, to the agenda of this item. Again, just to stay in line with neighborhood plan. I heard discussion earlier that it was discussed with OIP to be okay to do so. If we had that in writing, perhaps, but again, the preclusion is there in the neighborhood plan so that anyone who might be impacted by an event that will be discussed will have a chance to provide questions. That allows them in turn to decide whether to attend or participate in the meeting to discuss such or not. So again, 214-111C2 by any reading that I can see would likely put us at risk of violating the rules if we did, especially if the intent is to convey information to something that is of importance and will impact a significant number of people. And I'll leave it at that, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, so they're not asking for any approvals. They don't need an approval. In fact, no presenters need approvals, yeah? And the board doesn't have to vote on this. They want to present. That's it.
If I may, Chair, you know, the, if a presenter is here, then the public is permitted to comment on any item that's on the agenda then. And so that then could lead to questions and initial answers. Again, this, it's in the neighborhood plan as precaution so someone doesn't get caught unawares for an event that might impact them or their livelihood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Board Member Shubert Quoc.
This isn't a normal yearly City Lights Parade, and everybody knows about it. It's your mistake for not putting it on, so they're here.
And I agree.
So I'm totally in support that we listen to this, take a vote to the agenda and get on with it.
Yes, and we've done this before, and so we've already, any, any other discussions on this? Right, not hearing any. We'll go ahead and take a vote.
To add Irene from DTS, presentation for the Honolulu City Lights. Armstrong.
I regret to say no.
Fitzsimmons. Isokane.
Aye.
Lai.
No.
McCarny, not here. McDonald. Shubert Quoc.
Aye.
Sturgis.
Aye.
Carvalho.
Aye.
Six ayes, two noes, zero abstentions. The motion is adopted.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move. Honolulu City Lights will be four eight. So we'll go ahead and start by getting, by starting with the public safety report. We'll start with the Honolulu Fire Department, and before we go, go ahead, you can come on up. But before you go, there is something else I do want to say. I want to apologize to my board, and I want to apologize to Shubert Quoc for stopping them while they're asking questions. I should have never done that. In the future, I would ask all presenters to listen to the board members as they speak, because they have one minute, and we know that they can ask at least four questions within one minute's time. So please don't interrupt them while they're doing that, and I do apologize to Shubert Quoc and the other members that I may have interrupted. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Bates. I'm the second platoon captain at your central fire station here. I'm gonna begin by reading the incident stats for September 2024. We have had zero structure fires, zero wildland, five nuisance calls, zero cooking, and 12 activated alarms with no fire. Medical emergencies, we've had 101. We've had one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian and two motor vehicle crashes. We had zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and three hazmat incidents. And the fire safety tip for this month is safety alarms make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having a working smoke alarm in the home. For more information and resources, visit fpw.org. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, and replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old, or stop responding when tested. And that concludes that. Anyone have any questions tonight?
Anyone in our lobby have any questions, sir? Anyone online? Yep, why? No. All right, here are none, see none. Oh, I shouldn't board members, my fault.
Hey, how's it going? Just a quick question about the pedestrian motor vehicle accident in the intersection. Could you ask, which intersection the accident occurred?
I didn't, I don't have the actual data here. I just got the stats for the month, but I can get it for you.
That'd be awesome, just to see if, you know, there's something problematic.
Intersection it was, yeah. Thank you. All that kind of stuff.
Yep, thanks, man.
Any other board members? Any questions? All right, here are none, see none. We'll go ahead and we'll move to the Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant Segusio, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Chekovaleo, board members and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusio representing the Honolulu Police Department District One Community Area of Responsibility. When I get right into the stats, I know you guys just added things to your agenda. So motor vehicle deaths for the month of September is nine. It's up from four from the previous month. Burglaries is down two from the previous month. It was five. Deaths were 29. Previous was 24. UNVs or car break-ins are six. The previous month was three. Assaults were 20. Before, it was 18. Sex assaults were nine. Previous to that was two. There were no
Hi, Lieutenant Segusio. We lost your connection.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. Can you guys still hear me?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you and see you now, so if you want to repeat that, so, because we lost you.
The whole thing, did you guys get the stats? Sorry.
After the stats.
Oh, after the stats, okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to say that there were no criminal breaches to report at this time. And upcoming event that may affect traffic in the area will be the solidarity march for Palestine. That's gonna be happening this Saturday, the 5th at noon. It'll be starting at the Atkinson entrance of Alamoona Beach Park and going into Waikiki. Please avoid the area. And if possible, due to the increased vehicular traffic, leave early if you need to be somewhere. The other event that I wanted to touch bases on is the Pride Parade. That'll be happening on October 19th. But the time, the start time with that will be 4:00 PM instead of the early morning hours. So the start location will be the same, at Alamoona Beach Park, and will end in Waikiki. Drivers prepare accordingly. With Halloween upon us, the safety tip for October will be food tampering involving candies and treats. We're asking our community members to be very cognizant and diligent in checking the candies and treats that Waikiki will be getting that evening. HPD does have procedural information notice in place for our officers that will be handling those situations and the notifications that need to be made. All officers are all, that are getting called to these types of cases will also further attempt to determine where this tampered food came from. However, I think the best cure is prevention, so please check the packaging and wrappers if compromised. Please disregard, discard it. Only go to trusted neighbors, family and friends when trick-or-treating. Shopping centers will also be giving out candy on Halloween, but nothing, leave nothing to chance. And please, please check these candies at least twice before consumption. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time so I can take questions from the board members and public attendees.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone online who would like to address Lieutenant Segusio? Now, seeing none, we'll go to lobby. Anyone in our lobby who would like to address Lieutenant Segusio? Seeing none, any board members? We'll start with Board Member Ross Isokane, please.
More about this later in the evening, but you might be aware of this Hola Baloo later this year. Our understanding is it's not scheduled to occur this year. So, I mean, I think last year when this similarly occurred, you probably remember. A lot of people from the public just came en masse, you know, without an event. So, you know, I'm sure your group is already preparing for that, for the pedestrian safety issue, but I'll just want to say, I wish it had been going on, because I know you're gonna put officers there anyway, and it would've been paid for by the organizers. So I hope the city helps you out with, in terms of staffing there. Thank you.
Definitely. So we're always gonna be planning for Halloween. It's always a big event or a big night for us. A lot of things are happening in that time. So one another thing, too, we're gonna have DUI roadblocks and DUI enforcement heavily upcoming to that day. I know it's a Thursday, but we're still gonna be out there looking for any area drivers.
Any other board members have any questions for Lieutenant Segusio? Go ahead, Vice Chair Sean Fitzsimmons.
Lieutenant, I just noticed a general increase in the crime statistics over the last month. Is there any, anything you could attribute that general increase to, or is it just the, it's a random increase?
With that regards, yeah, there's, so there's no criminal breaches to report at this time. Normally, the numbers kind of fluctuate up and down, but when they reach a certain level, especially if they're two-thirds the, the original level from the previous month, then we're usually hitting a criminal breach. I did look into the robberies, though, into the, the location and areas and stuff like that. For last week, there was zero, which was fantastic, and I think we're gonna be attributing that to the initiative that Major Paul Okimoto and Captain Henry Roberts have been doing in regards to addressing homelessness and addressing encampments, trying to reduce the sizes, doing SPOs, and, and doing some major cleanups and stuff. So I'll, I'll definitely can attribute it to that.
Any other board members? Not hearing none, see none. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next month. Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. Next, we move to item three, presentation of certificate. Principal Joe could not make it today, so we'll move this on for another month. Next, we go to item number four, presentations. We're gonna start off, as we know, Hawaiian Electric. We're not showing up today. They will come. As soon as they've got everything put together, they will come to give the report to us. So instead, we're gonna go with Irene, DTS Honolulu City Lights, please. Thank you.
Really short. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us to present information for the Honolulu City Lights Parade and the events going on that day. We have some flyers. These will also be passed out in November to all businesses and property owners affected during the setup and closure for the parade. So if I could. So the Honolulu City Lights Parade is in its 40th year this year. It will, it's always held on the first Saturday of December, so this year it is December 7th, 2024. The parade kicks off at about 6:05. We start from Ala Park. The parade starts at Ala Park and goes on King Street and heads east toward Honolulu Halei. Closures for the parade. There will be some lane closures early on. We'll take single lanes around Ala Park and on Eva Lea Road earlier in the day to stage the larger vehicles, and then full road shutdown for the parade to start begins at about 5:00. So it's a progressive shutdown. Not everything is shut down at once, but we'll start from the King Street Ala Park side and progressively shut down all the intersecting streets from there to Honolulu Halei. At 11:00 AM earlier that day, Punch Bowl will be closed for the, the opening night block party, but that's a separate event from us, but just for your awareness. So the parade kicks off at 6:05. The last unit leaves Ala Park area around 7:30, 7:45 PM. And from there, it's a progressive reopening of the streets. Police, the street sweepers, and the traffic coning companies will be following the end of the parade, and then traffic will be released following that. So our outreach, we're presenting to the board, and in November, we'll also be on foot presenting these flyers to the properties affected by the event during that closure, yeah? Were there any questions?
So do we have any questions from anyone online, please? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Anyone in the public in this lobby that has any questions? Here are none, see none. We'll go to the board members. Remember, McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here. I just have a quick question. I support the City Lights Parade. I don't have any issues with it, but it usually starts around the 1st of December, doesn't it, so that we have all of December? And I'm not sure how you guys plan it, but also Saturday, December 7th, there's Pearl Harbor Day, right? So I think, isn't there another parade or something?
Yeah, the Pearl Harbor one is.
Might be better to do it a week earlier? Anyways, thank you.
Aloha, Mike Kaku. My name is Corinne Parchan. I'm with the Office of Climate Change Sustainability. I also do the logistics as co-coordinator for City Lights. We are aware that December 7th that also happened in 2019, I believe. We start City Lights first Saturday of December, throughout the whole December, up until the end before we take down. So that's why it happens. I'm not sure. It is early planning. Mayor will invite military, too, but they also have their celebration as well. Yeah, I hope that helps you.
Any other board members have any questions? None? Okay, I see none. Did you guys want our, a board approval?
Sure.
Okay, anybody make a motion?
To approve. I would appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sean's second. All right, any discussions, sir? See none? Any oppositions to this? Oh, Kevin?
Chair, thank you. As far as discussion, I'm not, not in support of the event, but because of the, the way the event was added to the agenda tonight, I will be abstaining from, thank you.
All right, so, okay. Any other discussions? All right, here are none. We'll go ahead and take a vote, please. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, point of clarification. Could we just have an acclamation? With that one abstention? Is that okay? No, we have to have a vote. Okay, sorry, sorry, okay.
So the motion is for the board to support the Honolulu City Lights Parade? Armstrong.
Aye.
Fitzsimmons. Isokane.
Aye.
Lai.
Abstain.
McCarny, not here. McDonald.
Aye.
Shubert Quoc.
Aye.
Carvalho.
Aye.
Sturgis.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, seven votes for aye, zero. Adopted.
All right, thank you, ladies. Got our support. Have a great day. We'll see you at Honolulu City Lights.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Yes, he didn't give it, no.
Point of order, Chair? Yes, please. I'm sorry, I, I was a little late, and I think I may have missed the part of the discussion here, but are, and I'm happy with the, that this passed, but are we allowed to vote on items that are not on the agenda?
Yeah, so we have, we have done it before, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was okay.
I did talk to NCO and all that about that today, so, yeah.
All right, then, thank you.
That's why we put it on the agenda. If not, they would have. All right, so next we're gonna go to item 4B, Four Street Mall Project, the Vahipana/Hawaii Triennial Public Art Exhibition. Nanea Lum and Marion Kador.
Just a slight correction. I'm Marion Kador from the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts, and Ka'ili Trask O'Connell is here with us, as well as some of our partners in the project.
Aloha, everyone. As Marion said, I'm Ka'ili. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Before we get started, I shared with Mayor that I was gonna be here tonight, and he asked that I slip this in and share something, something fun with you all. You all are aware of the surveillance cameras that are being installed, and, and he wanted me to share this with you. This is the new signage that was designed and developed. This will be to, to make it apparent when people come into Chinatown that the surveillance is heightened, and these will be created metal. It'll be metal, the same size, this design. I think the, the city logo will be a little bit larger, but he wanted me to share it because he was really excited about it, and they haven't decided the exact locations of where they'll be yet, but just so you all know that. So what we are here tonight to talk to you about is Vahipana. And Vahipana is a project that is being led by Moka, but along with many of, many collaborators who are here with me today, Rose Potter with Hawaii Triennial, Donnie Savantes with Alpuni Space. And Vahipana is a project that we are initiating. It is the result of a $1 million grant that we received from Bloomberg Philanthropies Public Art Challenge. And through this project, we are in doing art installations throughout all of Oahu. And these art installations will be, will be pairing a native wine storyteller for each of these special story places with an artist, and they'll tell the stories, the mo'olelo of each location, and the artists will interpret these stories through their art. And again, these will be at locations throughout all of Oahu, and one location that we will have will be, that we're working on is in Chinatown. And we're considering and working on Ke'kalikee Mall and Ford Street Mall. So I'm gonna hand it over to Marion Kador and Donnie, who are gonna talk to you about the, the vision for Chinatown. And one thing to note, this is, the Chinatown location is a part of our Phase 1. There are gonna be three phases that we're rolling these out, and the Phase 1 art installations are in partnership with the Hawaii Triennial, the Hawaii Contemporary, who is leading the Hawaii Triennial, which is led by Rose Potter.
So we just passed out a packet, and what this is, is an executive summary that explains the entire project, Vahipana. And it just kind of gives a snapshot of what the project will encompass. This is an island-wide project. One of the prompts from Bloomberg Philanthropies, the agency that we got the grant from, is to tackle social issues that are pertinent to your cities, utilizing public art as a vessel to kind of help solve problems. So our grant was centered around various issues dealing with overtourism and the impacts of overtourism. So you'll see on our list that the majority of the sites are places that are part of a common circuit that tourists often go to. And what we're to create opportunities for visitors and residents and visitors to access stories of places and critical, complex stories of various places to bring more awareness of where they are in the island. So they'll be kind of become vessels for people to understand Oahu more deeply. Chinatown was a place that Mayor really wanted us to engage. And he, so we have, you know, allocated a larger budget to Chinatown to ensure that we're creating meaningful interactions. Chinatown, of course, is a bit challenging because of DPP rules. And so we're currently working with DPP on a special district permit to propose these ideas. And I'm gonna just hand it off to Donnie, who can explain the projects that we would like to propose for Fort Street Mall as well as Ke'akalikee Mall. But I do want to emphasize that Hawaii Contemporary, who is also with us today, is a partner in this project. So there's three different sites that we're working with Hawaii Contemporary on. And Rose will tell a little bit more about what Hawaii Hawaii Contemporary is. And an exhibition that's gonna be opening at the same time as this, and these projects will be part of that exhibition as well. And she'll explain a little bit more after Donnie explains our mural projects.
Aloha, kako, board members. So I will kind of introduce the artist that we're proposing. Carl FK Pow. He's a longtime Kumu at Kamayama Schools, both at the Kapalama Campus and currently at KAL Campus on Hawaii Island. Yes, is that better? Okay. I'm Kumu at Kamayama Schools, Kapalama Campus and KAL Campus. I see him as a mentor to multiple generations of artists, young contemporary artists that that I work with. So we feel that he's a very deserving contemporary artist of an installation of this stature that kind of matches the Mayor's idea of a prominent piece of art in Vahipana for Chinatown. So if you all can see on the packet that Marian passed out to you that it's we're proposing two or three ceramic tile installations that would be inlaid in the ground at Fort Street Mall and Ke'akalikee Mall. The idea of that is that opposite ends of Chinatown, two places where cross-cultural people gather, kind of pass through every day. And what it is, is the one that you have is a in Hawaiian, the law of the splintered paddle. So those are actually letters that he's using. He's kind of created this alphabet that he uses then as artwork. And so it can actually be decoded and the idea is that that for people who, you know, might walk through Fort Street Mall every day on their way to work that over time, they'll start to kind of recognize this as as the kind of thirteen-letter Hawaiian alphabet and then you can you can read it. So I'm happy to answer any of your questions about any any part of it, actually. Let's do something, but I forgot.
And one thing that I wanted to explain was, just if you're looking at this packet. So there's one that's in color. And then Ke'akalikee Mall is in black and white. And the reason why I did that is because this is still in concept phase. So I didn't want to get anyone too excited about what that is going to exactly look like yet, but you can see the placement. So what we're proposing for Ke'akalikee Mall is two murals that would be on both sides. Reasons why we're really excited about engaging Chinatown with this type of project is to create more curiosity for visitors of Chinatown. So often people come for the restaurants, the cafes, the bars. But what we're aiming to do with these projects is to create more opportunities for people to wander, to get to know a different aspect of Chinatown that they may not otherwise learn. And so we're we're really excited about the potential of what this could bring to both Fort Street Mall and Ke'akalikee Mall.
All right, thank you. So we'll go to questions at this time. Do we have anyone online who have any questions? None. All right, seeing none or hearing none, we'll go ahead to move to anyone in the audience. Hearing none, seeing none, board members. We'll start off with Shuber Quoc.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I was curious as to whether there's going to be an explanation of the Hawaiian alphabet in here, which I could only find one letter, F. And I was wondering if people didn't understand what it really mean to say, especially visitors, even us Kamaiana as quite ignorant about the lettering. Would there be some accompanying explanation to this artwork?
Yes, yeah, we plan. So there'll be Vahipana and Hawaii Contemporary kind of signage. Signage QR codes that kind of lead to basically the alphabet next to each other and then as well as an English translation and in other languages as well.
All right, thank you first. Next, we're gonna go to Dolores, please. Now, Dolores.
You mean Laura? Dolores's daughter?
Thinking of your mother.
My question is the timeframe. It says February, May, September, closing date, March.
Right, so it this is in phase one of a three-phase opening, so this have it installed by February twenty twenty-five and the project is a three-year project. So for at least three years, this piece would be installed at Fort Street Mall and Ke'akalikee Mall.
All right, Armstrong, and then we'll go to Sean Fitzsimmons.
Thank you very much. I'm all in favor for art anywhere and at any time. So thank you for thinking of Chinatown. However, there is the, I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room who's thinking this. You are speaking and presenting this in Chinatown. And this is native Hawaiian art, which is just fine. Is there any effort to bring in the Asian culture or the immigrant experience in any of this, these installations over three years?
Well, to that point, I think that we're speaking to the multi-layered histories of different places. So in this case, we are pointing to and featuring to the kind of native Hawaiian history of Chinatown.
Go ahead, Sean Fitzsimmons.
Yeah, quick question. I noticed that's like, you know, right embedded in the walkway. Is it designed to have people walk over the installation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, so it's it's like the ceramic tile will be an ADA compliant. It's like coefficient of friction, so it's like a stone tile.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and end this real quick. I appreciate what you guys are doing and as a Kanaka, I am very thrilled for this to happen. And let us remember that King Kamayama the first actually had a home here in Chinatown that was destroyed that I'm trying to get a marker up that a lot of people don't realize. So Chinatown is actually to me, when I look at Chinatown, I see it as the Ellis Island because before the airplanes could come in, everybody had to come in through boats to downtown Chinatown. So it's multicultural. Every culture shares Chinatown. So thank you very much.
Oh, sir.
You have a good day. Thank you.
Sorry, if we just have one more thing we need to present, it'll be very quick. But for the opening of this mural, it's gonna be in conjunction with Hawaii Contemporary. I'm gonna let Rose just explain very, very briefly.
I know time is short, so I have some information about our exhibit and our organization, but essentially our hub space, which is a pop-up museum that will open on February fifteenth is gonna be at the Davies Pacific Center, eight forty-one Bishop Street. And we'll be applying alongside the Mayor's Office for a street closure for merchant for the night of that opening. I think that's what we would get accomplished, but I have a lot of information about the organization that I'll just pass around to you right now.
And I appreciate that. Did you guys want to vote of support from us? From us? Okay, then we need a motion. Anyone to start a motion?
This chair, I make that motion?
Okay, do we have a second? And we have a second. All right, is there any discussions on this? Hearing none, any opposition on this? No, so there's no opposition to this, so this is approved. Thank you, you know, thank you. You have a good day. All right, next up is gonna be Hawaii Capital Pool Improvement Project. You ladies may want to stick around, yeah, for this one. This one's gonna be very interesting. Gordon Wood, Administrator from Public Works Division, State Department of Accounting and General Services. All right, thank you. And they're gonna explain what's behind there. So you first take your time and take a deep breath because it's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, it is. It is exciting. Aloha. Thank you for having us here this evening. Me and my team are really here to talk about our project to repair and improve the pools at the State Capitol Building. If you could go to the next slide. As you know, the State Capitol, ooh, it lags a little bit, doesn't it? Okay, as yes, okay. As you know, the State Capitol sits within two overlapping regulatory districts, the State Capitol Historic District and the Capitol Special District. And each of those districts have have its its own regulatory measures and they overlap to a certain extent. Okay, and next. These these many regulations that we have to meet with this for this project include chapter three which is our environmental disclosure law as well as the city's major special district permit process. We're also keenly aware of the historic significance of the State Capitol and our obligation to that legacy. Our Capitol is unlike any other US Capitol. They all have have the domes and all of that, the ornate architecture. Ours is unique in its symbolism. We have the pools that represent the oceans. We have the chambers of the House and Senate that represent volcanoes rising out of the oceans. The structural columns represent royal palm trees. And the Oculus in the rotunda there represents the majestic mountain peaks and is open to the sky above. It's really a unique building. We've been working diligently with the State Historic Preservation Division to make sure that the work that we're doing respects and preserves the historic and cultural fabric of that building. Next, please. Okay, now, the project is intended to specifically address the many issues that have been caused by the pools. The pools were filled with brackish water drawn from wells beneath the site. And over the years, the the water in the from those wells has become increasingly saline since we started using it back in the late sixties. For many years now, we've experienced significant leaks into the occupied spaces and parking garage under the under the pools. And I should note that leaks that we've been experiencing aren't just little drips from the ceiling. It's water running down the walls and puddling and so forth. That's a very dangerous and and just terrible, terrible conditions. And you can see that in the upper right there. The the pools are also significant contributors to corrosion of the building's structure and its mechanical and electrical systems. And the quality of the water in the pools has encouraged the growth of algae. And as the algae dies and so forth, then we get the odors from the decomposition of the plants. Some of these issues have been around for a long time. The building opened up in nineteen sixty-nine when I was fourteen. I still remember that. And just a year later, I had fish to the pools to try to control the algae. The fish were not a good idea because their feces provided nutrient materials for the algae and the fish couldn't keep up to the algae growth. Within the the first ten years of the building being open, they already had to start to go in and to repair the leaks and the corrosion from the pools. It's been around for a long time. Over the years, the recirculating system that had been put in to make sure that the water was kept fresh, that became damaged due to corrosion and had to be shut down. The exterior walls of the legislative chambers have had to be repaired over the years. And ozone and enzyme systems were added to try to control the algae and those failed. And finally, at the at the end there, we had state employees out there vacuuming up the algae and other debris on a daily basis. Gets really expensive and really not satisfying. Next, please. Okay. The primary focus of our of our of our current project, and I think we
Can we go to the next one?
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, the primary focus has been to repair the the pools and make sure that we don't have leaks in the future. Now, on the right-hand side of this slide, you can see the Diamond Head Pool and the waterproofing for that was completed last year. On the left-hand side shows the the work that we're currently doing in the Eva Pool. And when we get done with that later this year, it will have waterproofing similar to the Diamond Head Pool there. As we've worked on this, it became clear that continuing to use the brackish wells would be terribly irresponsible. The the not just because of the costs of of the maintenance and so forth, but because of the fear that continuing to to draw this increasingly saline water from the wells might damage the potable water lens under the island and we can't really risk that. Okay, as as an alternative to continuing to use the saline water, we went to the Honolulu Board of Water Supply to ask if we could use potable water, drinking water for the pools. And their chief engineer has indicated that that idea won't even be considered. The water supply for Oahu is already severely restricted and this would be essentially a waste. If you think of it, these pools are large enough that on a daily basis, evaporation alone evaporates twenty-five thousand gallons of water. Okay, that's about what seventy families use on a daily basis and amounts to about nine million gallons a year. It would not be a good use. So faced with no long-term viable source of water. Okay. Let's see, our team started to look at waterless ways of representing the oceans. Okay, and after a long period of determination and looking at a lot of different ideas, we've settled on on the use of glass tiles to represent the water. And and so our design now is focused on moving in that direction. Next, please. So you might ask, why glass? And that's a good question. And we're using glass because glass has a lot of the qualities of water in terms of its transparency, its reflectivity and so forth. And the glass system that we're using has the ability to have permanently affixed artwork within the glass. Okay, that we can use then to represent the many colors of the ocean that we see around us. If you've been to the courtyard at the Capitol Modern and looked at the at the pool over there, you know what a great thing this is because they've used a very similar solution for that pool. And if you haven't been there, it's been there for twelve years, you should go over and take a look at it because it's really cool. Okay. Let's see, the the glass that we're using is very durable. You can walk on it, you can dance on it, you can skateboard on it if you want. And it is much easier to maintain than the water in the pools was ever going to be. Another feature of our design is that it is reversible. So that if at some point in the future, we can find a source of water that we can have, we can take the glass out, display it someplace else, do a little bit of work and refill the pools with water at that point. Using an extensive process, the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts went through a selection process to select the artist to actually create the artistic interpretation that will be representing the the oceans here. And they chose Solomon Enos and Saul is here tonight to talk a little bit about his artwork and how you can be part of this right here tonight. Saul?
Aloha, here and board, mahalo for this opportunity to share. I'm really going to try to see if I can condense about, you know, a hundred million years of stories and narratives into about two minutes and I'm probably not going to be able to do that. So I'm going to do my very best. So I've been working on a design that basically we've been facilitating access to community. So folks have been adding dots and dashes to a large design. And I've actually have one of the pieces with me rolled up here today or this evening. And if you folks have some time today, I would be honored if you folks come and make some marks on that design. We've probably had about a thousand, oh, sorry, thank you. We've had about a thousand participants so far everywhere from Kupuna, from Papa Cola come down and to all preschoolers. And all of them, what I'm basically doing is kind of like I'm a moderator. So I'm inviting people in, I'm sharing the design with them, I'm sharing them with them, the process of it. Folks can then photograph the marks that they make. And when it's installed at the state Capitol, they can come back and they can see, oh, there I am, I'm a part of this story. And so that's, you know, community participation is one of the main things that I love to do. And a tiny little side note, the mural that currently goes around the outside of our school right over here is a project that I did with students here from the school itself. And it's one of those kinds of examples that when you can turn the brush around and you give the brush to the community, they get a chance to make marks and leave their marks and they're not going to get into trouble for it. You're going to be rewarded for it, you're going to be acknowledged for it. So I'm a firm believer that community art can be fine art. Another critical component of this project was about twelve years ago, I had a chance to travel up into Papahana Mokuakea. And then we went on a NOAA scientific vessel, we went from, you know, past Ni'ihau. You know, we stayed overnight on Ni'ihua and we visited every island in Atoll all the way up to Midway and back again. And that completely reorganized the way I think of the Paiaina, our archipelago. And as a Kalakamali, it's like, I'm getting to know, my goodness, there's the other two-thirds of the islands. It allowed me to get a deeper, richer sense of our place in the world and our responsibility to all the cultures in the Pacific. And so my goal is to try to bring all these stories together, bring all these different narratives together to create something that truly represents the fact that the state Capitol itself is really the most public buildings of buildings in the state. The pools as they were, I was a legislative aide at the state Capitol for several years, sorry, remember? That the fragrance that would rise up from those pools, but also the connotation that those felt like moats, felt like stay out. Here we're saying, come in. The other three-fifths of the floor of the state Capitol will be open for more community engagement. And that's something I'm extremely excited about. There's a lot more I'd love to share, but I'm going to pull myself offstage right now. Thank you.
Very good. Next, please, Tom. Thanks, Saul. Yeah, he's exciting speaker, I'm just a technocrat, you know? Okay, the snapshot from our project timeline shows the process that we're undertaking for the city's special district permit. And this presentation to you folks tonight is part of that process. After this, we'll prepare our application for the city and we hope to submit that early next month. And then next. The city's district, special district permitting process includes a provision of a public hearing that will be hosted by DPP. And we're not sure when that hearing will be scheduled, but we are anticipating it'll be sometime in January twenty twenty-five. And there will be notices posted and then so forth to let everybody know when that public hearing is going to be going on. With that, I'll say thank you. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to address them.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have anyone online who has any questions? No. Do we have anyone in the public who has any questions? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we go to board members, I believe. Board member Li?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the presentations by, I understand, Mr. Wood, I want to, Mr. Wood, apologize on behalf of the board for the misspelling and the agenda for tonight, but my question for you is this. Do you know what happened to Barry the barracuda who was last seen on the Senate Side Pool?
Sadly, Barry did die, a signified death within the pool. And that's really all I know about it.
All right, thank you. And I had a chance to see the preliminary work for the project and did put a few dots and dashes on earlier. So I'm glad to see that someone tonight as well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Board member Kevin McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here. It's a wonderful presentation. I want to start by saying that I am very proud to be a citizen of the state of Hawaii. And I absolutely want to have the best capital of all the capitals in the country. And that's saying a lot because I'm also a very proud American and proud of all of the many state capitals that we have across our great nation. But arguably, we may already do have the nicest capital. But I do have an issue here. I didn't see a single dollar sign on anything in your presentation. And while I am very proud of our Capitol building already and I do want to make sure that we have and maintain the best capital in the country. It's not, I don't advocate opening for. We have a multi-billion dollar Aloha Stadium project to make it smaller. We have a multi-billion dollar project to revamp the Blaisdell Center. A thirteen billion dollar project to make a rail that will probably not be done in my lifetime. How much has been spent so far? And how much are we going to continue to spend to make this project happen? And I want to add to that, I know several hotels and several other buildings that have large koi ponds. Some of them have pools and ponds on their rooftops and some of them have saline water in those facilities. So I'm also a little bit confused, it shouldn't be that difficult to make a saline-proof water like a pond. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, let me try to respond to that. You had a question, how much is it costing? Okay, fine, we have a, we have, this is a three-phase project. The Diamond Head Pool was phase one, the Ever Pool is phase two. And then the third phase will encompass some additional waterproofing outside of the pools and the manufacture and installation of the artwork altogether. That, that work is, let's see, I think it's about thirty-two million dollars. Okay, small price to pay for this majestic building. Thirty-two million is a lot of money, I don't have it in my pocket, but it's a small price to pay for this building that represents all of us.
All right, thank you, board member Armstrong, please.
Thank you very much. Anybody who's been around the Capitol at any time knows that this needed a solution. It sounds like you found one and I'm excited for it. The project, assuming that the, when you showed the slide for the approvals, and I said, the project will take, before the public can walk on it, how long? That's question one. And question two is, does that thirty-two million also cover mitigation of the building, particularly in the basement for mold and other sick things that have occurred over the years?
Okay, let's see, two, two questions there. When is it going to open? Right now, our schedule is to have this e-six, okay? All the barriers down and so forth and go and enjoy it, okay? Mitigation of the longstanding problems with the leaking into the basement areas and so forth. That's, that is partially being taken care of out of that thirty-two million dollars and partially out of operating funds, okay? That are normal repair and maintenance of the building.
Thank you very much. And other board members? Board member Shoffa Simmons, please.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Wood. It seems like you identified and solved a longstanding problem. Like although the design of the water was beautiful, it seemed like the implementation was very problematic. So thanks for finding a solution. Just real quick, like with respect to the maintenance costs, could you provide any, do you have any numbers that would kind of juxtapose the maintenance costs of this glass insulation compared with the maintenance costs of the watered pools?
Okay, well, I don't have a complete accounting of what it's taken since nineteen sixty-nine. Okay, and be assured, it's taken a lot of money over those years, okay? And if you think of just having two guys waiting around in the pools with their vacuums every day, all week versus this glass, and if you talk to the folks over at the Capitol Modern Museum, the amount of maintenance that they do on the glass in their pool is approximately.
Right, so it's, so it's safe to say it's a significant saving.
Significant savings in operating costs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board member Shubert Quoc, please.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I was wondering, because in the state museum, they did have a pool that has the glass tiles, beautiful. And in this one, the mold turns into a glass artwork. It's durable, so are people invited to walk around it or they're not allowed to go into the?
Yes, yes, people will be invited to go ahead and walk on the glass. That will be part of the artistic experience. We're building ramps and steps so that people can get down into there. Similar to the non-slip surface that he was talking about earlier, this will have a non-slip surface on it as well, yes.
Right, and you, any other board members? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I want to thank you very much. I know you guys did one approval from this board, yeah? So we'll go ahead and someone will make a motion and we'll go forward from there.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to support this Capitol art project.
All right, do we have a second?
Second, I second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussions on this? Go ahead, board member McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. I'm hesitant to vote for this and don't think I can at this time. I'd like to see more information about the cost of the project and the money that's been spent already and what they expected to come, to cost to complete the project. And particularly bearing in mind, just to use as one example, the cost of our rail system, which was sold to the public for three-point-seven billion dollars and is now well over thirteen billion dollars. So I'd like to see a little, learn a little bit more about what the estimated cost of this is before I'm able to vote positive.
All right, thank you. Board member Fitz Simmons, please.
So with respect to that comment, Kevin, like I see where you're coming from, but there's no moving parts, you know, with respect to this installation, it's a glass surface that's being installed. It's not, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a, it's a comparison to make, you know what I mean?
Any other board members? All right, hearing none?
Chair, this is Kevin.
Oh, Kevin Li? How come we can't see him? Sorry, we've been, we're not seeing any pictures, Kevin, I do apologize about that. Go ahead, board member Li.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo the comments of board member McDonald. I do appreciate his concern for the costs and although I am in support of the project, I just wanted to ask Mr. Wood, what mitigations have been taken against the inevitable damage that might come to the, to the installation? Whether somebody decides to spray paint graffiti or, you know, chuck rocks over there just to see how many rocks it takes to crack the glass surface? That's where I think there could be some installation costs. And I know that Mr. Enos is preserving everything in a digital format if in case it needs to be updated, but reproduction of a certain quadrant or sector of the project, I'm wondering how much that might cost on a yearly basis. Thank you.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
For allowing me to respond to that, actually, let me say two things. We started off with a project estimate of thirty-two million and we're staying within that. In terms of the durability for people chucking rocks at it and so forth, A, we know from the twelve-year installation over at the Capitol Modern that it's very resilient for that kind of attempted damage. We're also, we have samples that are currently being tested at a laboratory outside of Chicago to make sure that that kind of durability is integral to the material that we're ordering. And, and, and so we are pretty confident that that kind of attempted damage will be, will be rejected by the material. But the sort of bright shining part of it is that although these are fairly large tiles, they're three foot by three foot, they are easily replaceable and we will have what's called attic stock, just in case.
All right, thank you. Any other discussions? Any other discussions? Do you want to follow up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you. Really appreciate your affirming for me the thirty-two million and sticking with it. I still have to say though, in your entire presentation, I didn't see a single dollar sign. For me to be able to vote positive and with respect to Mr. Fitz Simmons' comments as well, there being no moving parts. I've seen entire hotels and resorts be built for, you know, comparable cost. So, but particularly, there was nothing in your presentation that showed the cost, where the money's coming from and that, and that it says that that will be the cost and that's it. So for me to say yes to this, I want to see it in the presentation, exactly what the numbers are, what they're for and where the money's coming from.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Do you want to answer that? Go ahead, board member Armstrong.
Call the question.
Call a question? Okay.
The motion is to support the Hawaii Capital Pool Improvements Project. Armstrong?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Fitz Simmons? Isokane?
I'm going to abstain.
Li?
Aye.
McCarny, not here. McDonald?
Aye.
Shubert Quoc?
Aye.
Sturgis?
Aye.
Carvalho?
Aye.
Oh.
Six ayes, one no, one abstention, the motion is adopted.
All right, so this motion is adopted. Before I go ahead and let the board members go back there and do their little paintings and all that. I've been informed by Richmond, representative for Tyler De Santos, that apparently Tyler needs to be get going somewhere and he would like to know if this board will allow him to go ahead and do his bill now at this time. So something I have to bring up with the board, I told him, so.
I'll say thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to, but yes, but you guys are going to go back there and play colorings with them, okay? All right, thank you very much once again, yeah? So the question now is, do you can redo it? Will we allow Tyler to be taken out of line and move up to present now so he can get going? Go ahead, Shubert Quoc.
Yeah, you the chair, you can do that. You can move him up.
Yeah. Chair, I moved that we allow Councilmember De Santos' stamp to move up to present right now.
And then we have a second, all right? Any discussions? Nope, any oppositions? Nope, and go ahead, Tyler.
Everyone will thank you. First and foremost, I wanted to introduce Jack Truesdale, who just joined my team three days ago. And he is going to be joining you here at the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board moving forward. He'll be taking the place of Richmond Lusar, who is going to be moving on to something new and exciting in November. So we have Jack here, he's here to observe and I hope back in November. Richmond, will you still be around for the November meeting, maybe? No, he's going to be gone, so we'll say aloha to Richmond at today's meeting. A few updates, I know we're going to talk about the parade bill later on in the agenda, I'll leave that for last. But we're continuing with our efforts for adaptive reuse of downtown buildings. As you'll recall, last year, we introduced Bill twenty-one. Councilmember Calvin Saye introduced Bill fifty-four, both of which had to do with the adaptive reuse of our downtown office buildings and converting some of those with high vacancy numbers into residential units to bring more twenty-four-seven activity, positive twenty-four-seven activity into downtown. Downtown does have twenty-four-seven activity now, not all of which is positive. And so we have Bill fifty-one, which is working through its process now. We have a task force being convened to bring together many of the developers, architects, engineers who work on adaptive reuse to make sure that this bill is going to be a vehicle that facilitates the conversion of office buildings. We recently had the opening of ten-sixty Bishop Street, which is a small conversion of We recently had the opening of 1060 Bishop Street, which is a small conversion of HPU's former library. It's between the 7-Eleven and UPS store on Bishop Street and Executive Center. You might blink and miss it, but there's 52 units in there, which is gonna be exciting. And and all of those are set aside for people making below 100% AMI or 80% AMI right in the downtown core on Bishop Street. As you know, we're trying also to get more activities into the downtown area. And so we passed Resolution 24-203, which changes the which urges the administration to change the jurisdiction of Fort Street Mall from the Department of Parks and Recreation to Department Transportation Services to give the city a little bit more flexibility in permitting activities and events on Fort Street Mall. I think under the Parks Department, all we had was the farmer's market, but the Department Transportation festivals. They do sidewalk dining. They facilitate many other activities on our streets. We see that in Kaka. We see that in Waikiki. We see it in Kailua and now on the West Side. We want to be able to do more activities in a reasonable way on Fort Street Mall. In order to make that happen, there are changes in the ordinance, though. And so we just introduced Bill 56 today, which changes the portions of the ordinance that pertains to the Department of Parks and Recreation's control of pedestrian malls and carves out Fort Street Mall and Union Mall and directs that those be delegated to the Department Transportation Services for just those two malls. In the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board area, you actually have all of the pedestrian malls on the island. We have Sun Yat Sen Mall. We have College Walk, we have Kulu Velo Mall, we have some of the others, but these are the principal ones where we want more activity. And we hope that this will be a positive change. Before we get to the parades bill, which I know we're gonna talk about later on in the agenda, I do want to mention Chair Carvalho was at a meeting about the homeless Kalahale that they're building in Evil A that happens to fall in the Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board, but I thought it was important that the Chair of this neighborhood board be there as a moderator because what happens in Evil A, what happens right around Ala Park inevitably ends up affecting River Street and subsequently Monica Street and Bethel Street and Nuanu and everywhere else. And so getting a handle on the homeless issue in Evil A will certainly help with the homeless issues in Chinatown. If you haven't had a chance to have a briefing on what's going on in that area, I think it would be a wise idea to ask the city and state homeless coordinators about their activities in Evil A, because, you know, I think it's important for everybody to be aware of those. I'm happy to answer any other questions before we get into the parades part and uh before we get into that, but I do want to make some remarks about the parade thing before I wrap up my report.
All right. Anyone in the audience have any questions for Councilmember? Anyone online? We can actually see people now on video. Any other board members?
Thank you, Tyler. And I'm sorry to see Richmond go because he's been very active and very good at briefing us. So I want to wish you all the best and welcome, Jackson. Hopefully you'll be comfortable, but this is not an easy part to deal with. So anyway, welcome. And I'm very excited about the different projects that the city is doing, especially the Novking Street Respite. And then I hear that 100 beds are full most of the time. So it goes to show that we need more facilities. And also I'm waiting for an update from you on public toilets in Chinatown.
That's a great question for the mayor's office because we, on the council side, put in money for it, but the the administration needs to release it and put it to work. So I wish I had an answer for it, but if they don't end up spending it and it lapses, I hope that we can put in a future budget because we, Lord knows, we need it.
All right. Any other? Ross Esconci, please, Board Member.
Hey, Councilmember De Santos Tam. Yes, definitely. Thank you for sharing with us your plans on the resolution for Fort Street Mall, switching to DTS. Also, Bill 56, pedestrian malls. It sounds great in principle. It's probably in the early stages, so potentially we can hear more about that. You know, I see Director Morton in the back there, so welcome. We would love to have DTS come to our board, get them on the agenda. That way we can ask you questions under sunshine law. Just uh just so that way we know the vision, because definitely, it sounds like a great idea, but that would be fantastic.
Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilman, for being here. I'd like to welcome Jackson as well, for sure. We're looking forward to seeing him. But I would like to say that I hope that we're not seeing the last of you. Your predecessor, Carol Fukunaga, made it a good big point to not miss. I can't, I think she missed one meeting in the four years or so that I served on this board, and she was our city council member. So while we want to welcome Jackson, I believe that these neighborhood board meetings are very important for elected officials to show up to in person so that the board and the public can ask them questions and hold he can get answers on concerns that we have. So while again, we are welcoming Jackson, I hope we're not going to be seeing less of you.
Yeah, understood. And I try to come about once a quarter. We have seven neighborhood boards in my area, but my cell phone number is 808-348-8885. 808-348-8885. Please feel free. This is like never more than three feet away from me, much to the chagrin of everybody around me. But I'm happy to respond and be accessible. And I'm often walking around in downtown Chinatown, so you might see me there. So, you know, we're accessible in lots of ways, but I definitely understand and hear you. I also want to make one other point about my staff and Jackson. You know, my staff, when they come to neighborhood board meetings, really are my representative, and I mean that. And they take what comes here back to me. And really do have the ability to to speak and work on my behalf, and I empower them to do so. We'll make a note to Board Member Shubert Quoc's point. This is a special board. This is Jackson's only board, and my other staff members have two boards, and so you guys get double the attention.
All right. Thank you. Any other board member questions?
All right. Well, I do want to mention about Bill 50. And so Bill 50 is moving through the process. We had a hearing about it last week, and it's gonna come back for second reading next week at City Council on the 11th. And then the, or sorry, on the 9th, Wednesday, out in Kapole, but you can attend virtually. It's gonna come back to committee. And when it comes back to committee, we're gonna make a number of changes. Corporation Council and our drafting agency have made a number of notes just generally. But one key change that many folks here in the downtown area pointed out is there was a drafting error that basically said that any event that's not sponsored by a nonprofit, a certain percentage of the profits have to go to the Waikiki Business Improvement District. And obviously, that doesn't make sense for events that happen here in downtown or events that happen in Kapole or events that happen in Kailua. And so there was also a concern raised about directing it to a specific nonprofit. And so that's one key area that we're gonna address. I also want to make a point. A lot of the Waikiki testifiers who are fed up and unwritely so about having so many events that close street events downtown. And I know that this neighborhood board has said, we want more events, which is great. We don't want all of the events. We, you know, within reason and, you know, not not Spam Jam that has 20,000 people over, you know, overrunning the streets, but within reason. And I think this bill gives us an opportunity also to direct some attention out to the West Side where there really haven't been these sorts of large events, but we have more than half the population out there. They just had Kuhio Day Parade out on the West Side, which was fantastic. It was very popular. Kailua, same thing. I mean, they have parades from time to time, but there may be events that are appropriate out there. And so, you know, this isn't gonna be a free-for-all, but it is an opportunity to invite more activity here on a regular basis. And hopefully, there's some emphasis on arts and culture, whether that's, you know, our Hawaiian culture or Asian cultures, art, all of those things.
All right, Board Member Shubert Quoc.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear about more cultural and art activities. And I'm a little concerned because Waikiki made a very wise decision that with all the parades and the events, no alcohol is allowed in Waikiki. And there's also a legacy period where DTS would approve them when they're proven to be of value. But in downtown Chinatown, several years ago, we did the JFF study and that we had up to 40 events in a year that caused a lot of issues with the community. So if that's the way to make it safer, less noisy and culturally productive, yes. But a lot of time, these event promoters are using a nonprofit status to apply for the permit and give nothing back to the community. And they do not disclose their financial situation or this profit or not. So we don't hear the real situation. So it's difficult to support when you don't have real things in front of us and it's up to them to say whatever they want. And there's no way for us to check. At a nonprofit like, we know that they borrow to to get the license. And they are not reporting to us directly or responsible. But to the entity that they were applying to, they were the responsible party. So MB13, representing the constituents here, are not able to answer the concerns of the constituents. So that is my concern.
I think that's really good feedback. There was a requirement for the percentage that goes that was supposed to go to the Waikiki Business Improvement District, that there be some kind of audit. I think it makes sense to have some sort of reporting requirement for nonprofits that sponsored in general. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'll also make the point that historically, I think a lot of the friction around the events was because they closed so many streets, especially streets in proximity to residents. And every event seemed to have a different configuration. Some events wanted to close Nuanu, others wanted to close Hotel Street, others wanted to do lots of different things. And I think with, you know, Fort Street Mall being kind of the connector between downtown and Chinatown, I mean, really, right where where we can concentrate some activity, I think that'll also help to say this is an area where we can have events. This is what the different configurations look like, rather than everybody coming in with a new idea and a new thing that's just gonna rile up all the neighbors. You can set some expectations around it.
You may have a follow.
Yeah. And perhaps also the city council and maybe DTS can require if they're gonna have liquor, that it's it's in like a beer garden or in a parking lot that's being secured. I think that would help people accept, you know, this, when 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 they close up, that's when we have a lot of issues with people getting out of control. And if that can be worked out, I think you get a lot of support.
Agreed.
All right. Board Member Ross Esconci.
Thank you, Chair. Chulon, thank you for your passionate words. Just just as a reminder, with all due respect, Chulon doesn't speak for the board, and but she's speaking passionately as an individual. There's differences of opinion, I think, on this board. We're gonna be talking about Bill 50 later in the agenda. I understand you have to leave, but I just want to.
Jackson will report back.
Yes, yes, thank you. Just want to emphasize, though, there are differences of opinion. This board did pass a resolution. So, you know, think about the different perspectives. We don't want all the events in Chinatown. We really want our legacy events, and we know they're struggling.
Right? We want to strike a balance, but to have the community every time there's an event go through this whole hassle of making sure this event is done a certain way and that event is done a certain different way, but within, you know, I think it makes sense to have some sort of structure around it that we may not get 100% agreement on, but at least it's functional and is reasonable and cuts down on the excesses.
All right. Okay. So in the future, as we remember public, public. Yeah. Okay, you're right. You're correct. You're correct. No, yes, you're correct. Yes. You're correct. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I guess a concern with this is is something that happened before with the Arts District Merchants Association, which is when things got tense. They tried to, what's the word? Structure everything, all festivals in the area. So I a concern that I have was is that the Fort Street BID would be the gatekeeper for all events. And I don't think if it's a public street, which is what it seems like it's gonna become, that that should that should come into play. I think it should be open to all people and all nonprofits who want to do work there. I know with Adma, there was talk of everybody had to go through Adma to do an event downtown. So a lot of things happened, but I would hope that it would be kept open for participation by all, which is what you're talking about.
Yeah. And and that's very good feedback. And I think DTS, being the future managers of Fort Street Mall, have heard that. But I know we're gonna talk about Bill 50 later on, so I don't know if Director wants to comment on it now, or I guess you're up here now.
Well, I did get your letter asking us for our position on the transfer from Parks to DTS. And we're in full support. We've had worked it out with Parks that they'll continue to maintain the malls. They do a great job. So that with that, with that, we're in in full support. And as to Bill 50, yeah, we, you know, we support the the a more vibrant downtown. And and we seek, as Councilmember says, we seek to find a balance that balances, there are competing interests in downtown over events such as this. Our view is that that downtown is, you know, needs events. Doesn't need all of the Waikiki events. I heard that loud and clear. But, you know, we're in general, we're in favor of doing what we can as a city and my department as the permitter of of the events to be as supportive as as we can. Doesn't mean we want to have a open, you know, an open laissez-faire, no regulation environment, because that that's not what we're really looking for. But we're looking to have a safe, good time. We've had some very, very great, great events in Chinatown over the last two years. We want to keep that trend going forward. I'll be here. I'm happy to answer any other questions, too. But we, I just wanted to express the department's general support for both members.
Nicole, please. Nicole. Nicole, can you hear me?
Oh. Call my. Yeah, sorry. I am at an event at UH, but I took time out to speak on this. With specificity to Adma, it wasn't a gatekeeper issue. What we're talking about is real costs, and nonprofits often don't have the experience or the industry connections to have security or programming or entertainment. So oftentimes, they need to partner with promoters or people that organize these large events. So Adma was never gatekeeping. It was just one of the few organizations that was willing to do nonprofit work down there that included events at that time. Which it did dissolve under a lot of duress from Chulon's organizations about somehow gatekeeping when it really was just a permit process. So I would be happy to speak later on this, and I just wanted to make that point of clarification, especially with Adma and JFF and speaking to that process. So I'm available. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Next we go to Sean Fitzsimmons, please.
Just wanted to make a quick comment regarding the concerns of safety that are associated with these events. I think Mark Tyrone came a bunch of information regarding the statistics, you know, noise complaints, any sort of arrests. And it does not appear that there's any any difference whatsoever with respect to any sort of safety concerns that these events would bring to our district. Thanks.
Board Member Bob Armstrong, please.
Thank you. And thank you, Tyler, for being here and welcome to Jackson. And goodbye to Richmond. Sounds like a song, country music song. Just wanted to underscore that this board, several months ago, developed and approved a public interest group to bring more festivals, parades, and events to Chinatown. So by and large, this board is in favor of signature events that help bring people back to our community, which really hasn't resumed since pre-COVID times. So I don't want the public to get the wrong impression because of some folks who have voiced their opinions that we aren't in favor of more and better events here. And and I'd like to add, you you mentioned arts and culture and history. Obviously, those events make sense here. But also, I would maintain diversity. I think we're the the center point of the diverse community that we enjoy here in Honolulu.
Absolutely. And I think one thing that I want to make clear, and I'm sure DTS would agree, is although, you know, a lot of our efforts are focused on activating Fort Street although, you know, a lot of our efforts are focused on activating Fort Street Mall, that's not to say that there's other spaces in Chinatown that aren't appropriate for smaller events. We've had jazz in uh the Sun Yat Sen Park next to Hawaii Theater. Um Lee's done for many years, uh lots of activities in Smith Veritania Park. Of course, Trust Republic Land and A S B and other entities have done a lot of things in Allah Park. Chulon's done something in Chinatown or the um Chinatown Cultural Plaza. And so there's lots of other ways we can especially have these smaller events. I'm trying to, you know, uh downtown and Chinatown do have lots of little um groups and organizations. I don't think we've ever had a Vietnamese festival. We have so many Vietnamese restaurants. We've never had a Thai or Laotian event in downtown uh Chinatown. Um, it brought out that, and we have so many um folks from Thailand and Laos who have lots to offer. I mean, all kinds of activities, a noodle festival, because every culture has got noodles. Um, there's lots of different ways we can do it, and it doesn't have to be a big parade, but um bit by bit and piece by piece, we can uh hopefully uh get things moving.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'm not seeing anyone else, so I'm gonna end it up. I'm gonna end it up. Wait, wait, let me end this first, okay? Then you can speak. So first of all, I think people need to understand, a lot of people don't realize Chinatown is not a residential area, people, even though there we have residential buildings. It is not. It is zoned before. It is an entertainment district. This is what people need to know. This is an entertainment district. So it's just like, um, Board Member McDonald used to say, if you don't like the noise of the airplane flying off off every single day, don't live next to an airport. I mean, I know that the cancellation of Halabalu, I've got a lot of people in my building, and I'm talking about all those peoples that are saying, we like these events because they like the food, they like the diversity and all that. Bringing entertainment back into Chinatown to me is very, very important to help our businesses, but culturally, as Mr. Armstrong has said, Waikiki wants to give us something right off the bat, then bring us back our whole Aleas, because whole Aleas originally started here in Chinatown. Bring us back that whole Alea, yeah? Let's make it diverse. We have all this Chinese Chinese cultural events that goes on. This is great. But let's have all the other cultures like Sukkuri Ma, which is, um, that's another heritage. I mean, you're not just gonna come out over there. Koreans, you know, so let's break it culturally for everybody else. And that's all I wanted to say, that everybody realized that Chinatown is on before. It is a entertainment classified as an entertainment district, not a residential. Now, for this young man here, I think I already beat you up this afternoon. Um, I'm very sad to see you go, but I'm very happy and excited for your new position and what you're gonna be doing. And and I've met Jack already, and Jackson's like a standout person. I know he'll be fine. Don't be scared by our board. That's just who we are. Okay? Go ahead.
I'm like more scared right now to say thank you, guys, than when I give my my normal report. But I just wanted to say it was a pleasure coming here every month. I mean, you guys are the most colorful board. You're the most fun board. Like, I mean, I could think of a couple of scraps that we've had off the top of my head that just like it challenged me. I hope it challenged you guys as well. We had some great discussions and uh, you know, I feel like I've had an opportunity outside of this board where I've run into you guys, either in an event, either at, you know, where you guys work, or, you know, on the street, walking around Chinatown, and I got an opportunity to get get to know pretty much every every single one of you guys, including Kevin on the screen. And uh, it was just, it was just a pleasure. And I say this all the time. I mean, we all get paid for this, to do this public service, public work. Um, but you guys do it. You guys volunteer to do it. And that's like, that's really special, and I appreciate you guys for that. So thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, we'll miss you. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and move on into Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five, Urging Additional Government Reforms Recommended by the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. I believe we have two of these resolutions in the Google Drive that everyone should have a chance to take a look at, okay? If you haven't, then please do so. But before we move on to any real discussions on it, we're gonna do a presentation by the League of Women Voters Legislative Committee, Sandra Ma.
Hi, Chair, and hi, Members of the Committee. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hi, good to be with you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Resolution, proposed Resolution two zero two four dash zero five, urging additional government reforms recommended by the Commission to improve standards of conduct. My name is Sandy Ma. I'm a member of the Legislative Committee of the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. The League of Women Voters of Hawaii is a local, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. We are a chapter of a national organization which has other chapters throughout the country. There's over seven hundred leagues nationwide. We were formed over a hundred years ago in the belief in the more perfect democracy. The League is um a nonpartisan organization, as I said before, and we play a critical role in our democracy. We work to empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation. At our core, we are a good government organization working for government transparency and accountability. And that's why I'm here today to talk about your proposed Resolution two zero four dash zero five. Thank you for considering this measure. To give a little bit of background about this resolution and how it came to be, in case people have forgotten, and need a little bit reminder, the House Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct was formed in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-two in response to the arrest and guilty pleas of two Hawaii state legislators, former House Representative Ty Cullen and State Senator Kalani English for bribery. So I am not here speaking on behalf of the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. When I was with Common Cause Hawaii, I was actually appointed to the Commission, but I did not so serve out the full term. I had to leave the Commission. But to be clear, I am not here speaking on behalf of the Commission. I am here representing the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. I can say that the Commission met for nearly a year in two thousand and twenty-two. And after meeting nearly a year, it came up with a suite of legislative proposals to improve ethics, to improve campaign finance laws, and to improve sunshine laws in in the state of Hawaii. So in the beginning of the twenty twenty-three legislative session, over thirty bills were introduced uh to improve uh standards of conduct. While over thirty bills were introduced, several bills were actually passed. And while those bills were passed, uh and some of them were excellent, excellent bills, not all of them were passed. Some of them were housekeeping legislation, but a whole host of bills uh were passed into law, and this was in twenty twenty-three. So a lot of changes were made um in twenty twenty-three, and I could just give you a sampling of what was passed. Uh, for example, um, a bill was passed and adopted into law, prohibiting lawmakers, state employees, hiring, and contracting with family members. So an anti-nepotism law was passed, but this law specifically centered on the legislative and judicial branch. So one law was passed like that. It was recommended uh by the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. Um, so that was one bill. Um, let's see, another bill was boards like yours, uh boards and commissions should keep meeting records on the website. That's another bill. Uh, let's see, another bill, um, you know, had, there's a lot of housekeeping measures dealing with campaign finance laws. Um, a a lot of bills uh were passed. Um, you know, we uh one bill had to do with lobbyist training requires the state ethics commission to establish and administer lobbyist training course and and require lobbyists to take training courses. Now, I could go through um these bills and and talk about them and give you bill numbers from twenty twenty-three. But when we come right down to it, there are some big ticket bills that were not were not passed in twenty twenty-three and were not passed in the twenty twenty-four legislative um session. And I think um your uh resolution that you're considering now um touches upon that issue. Uh, you, and and it's really good to put pressure on the legislature to say that there there's this Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct that really recommended some important changes uh in response to this bribery scandal that engulfed the state legislature. And maybe we should think about adopting these changes proposed by the Commission. And so um this is what is sitting before you. Um, and this is what uh you are looking at today. And thank you for really taking the time to put this resolution together and to uh really keep abreast of what is happening uh at the state Capitol. If I could answer questions about uh um anything uh that you're considering, uh, please let me know.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone online who has any questions for Sandy Ma, please? Anyone in the audience? Um, Kim Coco is the representative-elect Kim Coco. Is there anything you wanted to say?
Um, yes, thank you so much. Um, I wasn't sure if I'm on the agenda to add something more later, or shall I just use that time now?
So go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, uh Chair Cavalli. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the um the Neighborhood Board uh considering this uh resolution that the community. Um, I've been speaking with members of the community, the process they went through to come up with these five proposed rule changes, three statutes, and then one potential constitutional amendment. So it's five, three, one. Um, they actually arrived at this particular list after going through the list of proposals made by the um Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. Um, and I, you know, cross-checking which ones were turned into law, which ones were watered down, and which ones are unfinished business. Um, and so these were the ones that most stood out as unfinished business. I think there's one in here that actually was not a part of the standards um Commission. Uh, should I continue? Um, so but anyway, this is really important. So I just wanted to share with you. Um, having been a Neighborhood Board Member, um and now, you know, moving into this position to serve as a representative um that cross-sections with your neighborhood board district, um it's really important, and I want to make sure you know this, that any resolution you your Neighborhood Board passes, I will be paying attention to that because I know the process that you go through. I know that you are um you're elected um by your neighbors and you deliberate thoughtfully. And so I will, this allows me, and this would inform how I vote, how I advocate, how I, you know, have have discussions with the potential new leadership of the House. When they meet with me, um, I can say, well, you know, my, you know, some of my constituents, and this resolution's being heard by all the all of the Neighborhood Boards um in in my district um that my constituents um, you know, would like me to make sure I support leadership that is, you know, open to these good government reforms that move power away from just a few people power and money and moves it more towards the body of the fifty-one members to make sure that everyone's represented. And, you know, make sure every voice that no one that no, not one single representative, whether they be Democrat or Republican, uh whether that whether they be in the faction of leadership or not, but everyone feels that they're included, that every single resident in the state has a voice um and a vote on all of these important issues. So this is um, anyway, that's why that's why I'm excited about this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead to the continuation of discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five. Oh, Sandy? Where's she at? She's soon.
No, no, I don't. Watching.
Yeah, so yeah.
Questions. Thank you.
Answer her questions, yeah? Go ahead. Go Board Member Ross Isakana.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Sandy. Thanks for being here. Uh, I was just curious with your experience of the League of Women Voters, um especially with, you know, as Representative-elect Yu Emoto just mentioned, there will be a new speaker. Uh, I was just checking in your experience. Will the League of Women Voters are are they familiar with the potential favorites, frontrunners for the Speaker? Are you um is the League of Women Voters connected? And just based on your experience, how, what's the appetite like for the potential new speakers in terms of these legislative reforms? Just your perspective you can share.
What is, I I'm sorry, I didn't hear like a word or two.
Yeah, Sandy, just do you have uh any perspective on the potential new Speaker of the House? And if so, what their appetite? State reforms.
So
Did that come?
So yes, rumors are, um, thank you for that question. Um, so yes, there are rumors going around as to who who the Speaker will be, and there's several names being floated um currently. So clearly, we don't know yet. There's still an election uh coming up November fifth. So everyone, please register and and please vote. Uh, there's still plenty of time to register and vote. Um, so yes, uh, we are always uh hopeful um that we can effect change, that with the people power, that there could be change. And so, yes, um, there is appetite for reform. Uh, clearly, every is appetite for reform, otherwise um there will be no advocacy. And so um um, if if that's your question, um, clearly, your resolution uh will be uh heard and will be received well. And so um if, um, so we do thank you uh for drafting this and for customizing this, and so it it definitely has merit. And it definitely uh will have weight. So it, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we're gonna go ahead uh to Board Member Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. I did have some questions for former Board Member Ma, but I think I'll say them if and until we are in discussion of a Resolution proposal, Mike. Thank you.
So could you please repeat that?
My apologies, Chair. I did have some questions for former Board Member Ma, but they would be appropriate only if we were discussing one or the other, if any, of the proposed resolutions for this evening. So I'll hold off until there's a resolution on the table. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, no problem. All right, so we are in discussion on Resolution twenty twenty-four. Did everyone get a chance to go into the Google Drive and look at it? There's two resolutions, one original and one says watered down.
Twenty twenty-four oh five, are you speaking?
Yeah. Twenty twenty-four dash oh five. Yeah. So does everybody taking a look at it? So we're in discussion on that, right?
Point of information.
We're talking about Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, again, I thank you for mentioning that. I do see in the Google Drive a draft number two and a draft number one. Could you specify which, if any, either of those we are discussing at this time?
So both of them are um, both of them for standard of um um improved standards of conduct. One is the original, and two would be the watered down version.
Thank you, Chair. Um, well, for clarification, I I will, if it's necessary, that we move to put under discussion draft number one, urging legislature to adopt, etc. One that appears to be more full and longer.
Okay, you we got um proposed, so we got a motion by Kevin Li, and we have a second by Ross Isakana. Any discussions moving forward? On slide.
Thank you, Chair. I think that this draft, uh, again, appreciate that it was drafted, and it does provide some additional information, more so than was in the other draft, which is a bit a bit vague. Uh, I do hope that each of the members tonight will get a chance to review the actual report from the C I S C that was referenced by Ms. Ma. It is very important. It is very important and well-written as far as the items that are in this resolution under discussion here tonight. The items that are listed under the proposed amendments to the House and Senate rules, I think they appear to be fair. I think they're focused on some of the items that are not germane to our operations as well. Regarding the list of statutory amendments, I would ask Ms. Ma if she could comment on the first one that's listed there. Again, I'm assuming that Ms. Ma or group may have had some input into the construction of this resolution as it's presented. So my question specifically is about contributions by board members to, to campaigns. Does that trickle down to every board member as boards are defined within the Hawaii administrative rules? And then, just to get this out of the way, a few technical amendments. I think we should replace the comma following the end of item number three under the second resolve clause to a semicolon to match that in the previous section. And in the third resolve clause, term limits is not being used as a compound adjective and should have the hyphen removed. And I'll leave those two as amendments to the resolution as proposed. Thank you.
Alright, any other? Go ahead, Representative-elect Kim Coco.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm Board Member, I'm not, if I can answer that question. So the way the community drafted this one section, and it reads prohibit campaign contributions from state contractors. It should read state grantees, state leases, their owners, their board members, their staff, consultants, and those person's immediate family members. So it's not randomly any board, it's specifically board members because the state legislature does provide granting aid to nonprofit organizations, and they have boards. And some of these nonprofit organizations get up to $1.5 million. And what we don't want to see is that a very highly paid consultant from, or, you know, so that's what it's about.
Chair, thank, I appreciate that response. If we could just take that correction, if you will, as a technical amendment, along with that of the comma, the semicolon, and removal of the hyphen, I think that will garner support for the resolution. Thank you.
Alright, go ahead, Ms. Ma.
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to clarify that League of Women Voters did not have a hand in crafting this proposed resolution. But I do agree with Representative-elect Coco's, excuse me, Representative-elect Kim Coco Iwomoto's reading of the further resolve subsection one. I will further say that League of Women Voters does not, our position does not support term limits, and I have to put that on the record.
Go ahead, Board Member Li.
Chair, thank you. I do appreciate Ms. Ma's comments. I had only made this assumption that her league was involved just because of the presentation tonight, but I appreciate that and thank you.
Now, any other board members have any discussion on this? No other discussions? Go ahead.
Call for the question.
So, so we, so, so, Mr. Li, are you making a proposal, motion for number one or number two?
Thank you, Chair. I'll interpret that as saying the motion on the table is for support of Resolution 2024-05, draft number one, with the three resolved clauses and the technical amendments as noted verbally by Representative-elect Kim Coco Iwomoto and the two typographic amendments that were mentioned by me earlier. Thank you.
Alright, and that's the, do we have a second?
In the absence of a second, I will second it.
You're a second. Any further, any further discussion on this? Not, not hearing none? Alright? Any objections to this? Then it, then it is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board Member Li. We'll make the corrections and everything that was asked of.
And thank you to all the speakers as well.
Yes, and thank you to everyone that helped speak on this. Alright, so this is done. We're gonna go and update on City Council Bill 50, 2024, relating to parade, street festivals, and other activities, specifically as a current bill's language. Alright, so we'll let you run off with this. Go ahead, Board Member Ross Esicani.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I guess maybe to share something that you shared with the rest of us, Hala Blue will not be occurring for 2024, this year. That's our understanding, is that the organizer did withdraw his permit. Now, just wanted to share that. Now, with respect to Bill 50, one thing to just kind of make comment on is, our board did make a resolution a couple of months ago, just unanimously to support community events in our neighborhood. We've lost out on a number of our legacy community events. They, they are widely popular. They drew on many, many community members into our neighborhood, and, and we unanimously supported community events. Now, subsequent to that, the City Council did introduce Bill 50 in August. And for those board members who might not be following Bill 50, Bill 50's main talking points does address Waikiki. But as was discussed earlier by the council member, the draft bill does impose certain rules and restrictions that our understanding would make it harder for community events to be put on in downtown Chinatown based off of discussions we're having. For example, I think the discussion of the beer gardens specifically within downtown Chinatown is somewhat of a, you know, it impedes events. And our understanding is that was one of the reasons why Hala Blue 2024 is not occurring. So that, we just wanted to give an update and overview on what's happening with Bill 50 and, and maybe just discuss it with the board because we know it's important to a lot of us.
Alright, also, Bill 50 does say the events that are held here won't go to any nonprofits here. It goes to Waikiki. And that is discussed with Councilman Tyler Santos at lunch today. And I told him I could not support this bill the way it is written because I don't think any event that happens in Chinatown that Waikiki should get the money for. Bottom line. Unless that changes, I cannot support it. Yeah? Alright, so now we've been briefed on Bill 50. Do, do you all want to proceed with a discussion on this? Go ahead, Board Member McDonald.
I'll make a motion then that this board does not support Bill 50. And we can have a voter discussion to send that message to the legislature.
Okay, so motion not to support Bill 50 unless it's changed or modified. Yeah, we got, we got first, second. Discussion, please.
Point of clarification. We just nominated or made a resolution to not support the bill. Is that what we want, or do we want just to ignore it so that it comes back to us with a better text? I mean, now we're gonna have to vote on, no, the board's gonna say no on Bill 50, and it may be pretty good someday. Because that was the resolution that was just made and seconded.
Right, and the second hearing, which technically would probably be the last one before it goes to vote, is on Wednesday, on this bill.
So then if I may, I'll amend my motion to say that this board opposes Bill 50 as written. Thank you for clarifying that.
And then now we have a.
I second it.
We have a second.
Again.
Do we have any discussions on this? Any, any discussions? Go ahead.
I suppose we want to include in our message to the legislature that the major reason, the City Council, sorry, that the main reason we're opposing it is for the, was for the funding reasons. And that it should, so they should know that that is one of the major things. But not just the funding reasons. It also impedes our ability to have major events in our district, which we also would like to see more of.
Alright, Sean Fitzsimmons?
Yeah, just a quick discussion. You know, we started talking about beer gardens and stuff, right? Was there a triggering event that you guys know on the board that created like this push to have a beer garden implemented in all these events? Or was this just a random suggestion? Like, was there a triggering event or no? No, right?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, right, we've had a lot of discussions with certain event organizers asking, have there been any violations from the Liquor Commission? Have there been any major fights? And so far, they've reported and, and we haven't been able to find any violations. Now, I will say that, that we do have Director Morton here, but unfortunately, he's not on the agenda, so we probably can't ask him questions. So maybe in, in the future, you know, Director Morton, we can get you to a future meeting on the agenda and, and ask him, like, what, what is the rationale? If there's no incidents, if there's no violations, what is the reason that island-wide, when we've had so many historical events, Hala Blue, St. Patrick's Day, etc., with no incident, why, why do we need these additional rules, regulations, and restrictions?
Go ahead, Board Member McDonald.
Thank you. I know to address Member Fitzsimmons's concerns, just before COVID, the St. Patrick's Day event was generally sponsored by Don Murphy, owner of Murphy's Tavern. And he got in, what was, in my opinion at least, two citations by the Honolulu Liquor Commission for, for occurrences that I believe were out of his control. People had snuck into the alcohol area and, and did not buy, did not buy their alcoholic beverages themselves, but had somebody else, somebody else bought them for them and brought them to the table. They, they, they broke the law and snuck into the area, and then they broke the law further. And I, Don Murphy then said, and so he was cited, and they shut the event down an hour early. And I'm sure you're familiar with our St. Patrick's Day event, which would have cost him in the neighborhood of tens of thousands of dollars. So I know that since then, Mr. Murphy has not been interested in sponsoring that particular event. But that may be one of the events, and among other discussions that have been had, that have triggered the beer garden concerns.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead, Sean Fitzsimmons.
Seems to be an overcorrection, if anything, right? People sneak into bars all the time, like every weekend, right? Like, for, for two citations, like, this entire protocol has been introduced? That seems kind of ridiculous.
Board Member Kevin Li.
Chair, thank you. As far as historical perspectives, I just wanted to draw the attention of the board to a meeting that was held 10 years and one month ago today, discussed beer gardens in this very venue. And there was a lot of discussion. It's all documented in the meeting minutes from that time. And there was a particular comment made by a relative of one of our current board members who advocated and spoke about beer gardens. And so there, it certainly has been there. And I'll just take the quote here, Mauring noted that a beer garden is a natural conflict that could be good for the event because it will be sectioned off. So the paths are clear, minors are not drinking, and the alcohol is contained in certain areas. So I think there's a lot of history that we could draw upon. Thank you.
Go ahead, Board Member Ross Esicani, and then we'll go ahead and bring it to a close.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the comments of Board Member Fitzsimmons and Board Member McDonald, you know, two violations, especially in the context of 15,000 attendees. That's minute. And, and yes, Board Member Li brings a good point. 10 years ago, this board had a discussion. Couple of months ago, we passed a unanimous resolution, though, in support of these events. This is the current board. I'm still looking for, you know, certain perspectives of, 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 really even potentially from the public to understand why these beer gardens might be necessary. I, I know that, you know, Director Morton's on the agenda, so we can't ask him questions. There might be other members of the public who might be raising their hands to speak and give their perspective, so I'd be welcome to hear.
I'll give you one last, yeah. She did, she did ask to speak.
There, there have been other violations. I, I think part of the problem is the board, you know, you're relatively new members. There's people who have been in the community for a long time, like Mauring. There's a history here, so there have been violations. So to say there's been one, there's been two, no, there's been others. Problem is, there's not a lot of documentation. But Kevin Li did find something like that. So I, I also think it's, it's very hard to discuss these things at the, at the Neighborhood Board level. What I have suggested to DTS in the past is that they hold public hearings so that members of the public can bring these things up. They'll be on the record to be addressed or not addressed. But it's very difficult at the Neighborhood Board level, and everybody has a different perspective and weighs in and has a different voice. So, which isn't bad, but I'm just saying, some things I just don't think are addressed well at the Neighborhood Board level.
Alright, and thank you. Before we close, Sean wants to say one quick thing and then we're going to vote.
Just one quick thing. I think it's very, very, very dangerous to be so speculative about the number of violations, right? If you have an exact number with respect to the violations, please bring it to our attention so we can be more informed. But the, but the event organizers have, have come, we've asked, we've grilled them on whether or not they've had violations, noise ordinance issues, all these things. We vetted all of them, and they've given us good feedback as, as, as to get our support for these events because these violations were taught numerous. So if you have different information, could you please, please bring it to our attention? Otherwise, it's all speculative. It's all speculative. It's, there's no foundation for it. Thanks.
And furthermore, I think we all work very hard to represent our neighborhood. And so any aspersions that we do not represent the community, I think is really unfair.
Alright, so the, the, the question has been called for.
It's objection to the question, Chair.
Would you please repeat?
Sorry, Chair, I object to the calling of the question at this time.
I object to the call of the question. Do you object to the call of the question? The call of the question was called about a few minutes ago, maybe five minutes ago. We are going to go.
Chair, point of order. The call, calling the question means if there's no objection in the room to move ahead to a vote, that can proceed. However, if there is any objection to that, that's being made.
So we just had, we had a discussion. You spoke, everybody else spoke. We're gonna take the vote.
Chair, point of order.
Go ahead.
To, to Board Member Li's point, the question was called. A board member objected. We just have to vote whether to bring it to a question under the parliamentary rules, just pointing it out for you. As long as, as long as one, two, three, four, five, six of us.
Alright, so we will take two votes right now then.
Yes.
These objection to you for the call of the question.
Because, because I'm rising to make an amendment to the motion, which is a presidatory motion, so.
Alright, so we, this, what, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna vote to objection to call, to the call of the question. Alright, that's the first thing we're doing.
Alright. Armstrong.
Okay.
So what, what we're voting on right now.
Please, please repeat, yeah.
What we're voting on is Board Member Li is objecting to your call of the question. So if we're in favor of Board Member Li, then we'll say aye. Oh, we're in favor, yes. Okay. Yes, you may.
I'm sorry. My understanding is that Member Li wants to make an amendment to what we're deciding here. So if we vote first to, vote to, to have a vote, then he gets a chance to, in the discussion, to propose his amendment. Is that correct?
That's, that's how I would think it was, but he's calling an objection to.
No, no, I didn't.
No.
Li did.
He's calling an objection to his call to the question.
Right, so once we vote to call the question, then he can propose his amendment. Well, I would like to hear Member Li's amendment. Okay, then I'll have to vote no.
So go ahead, Bob, I'm trying to, you want to say something?
No, 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 I, I, I'm just trying to understand, since I'm all. No, 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 I, 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 I'm just trying to understand, since I'm always first with my name. I'm just trying to understand what we're doing here. Uh, may, may I just ask, uh, Member Ly, is it a friendly amendment or is it not?
It is the most friendliest of amendments. This could have been simplified by simply recognizing me as a second-time speaker.
Amendment, all right.
Yeah? You can try.
And, Mr. Chair, I absolutely want to withdraw, uh, in favor of what Mr. Ly has to say.
Okay. Miss Board Member Ly, go ahead.
You're muted.
Much appreciated. Mr. Chair, in light of the comments that were made by the maker of the motion, Mr. McDonald's, um, regarding the reasons for the existence of the motion or the resolution that we are discussing, I would simply ask that we encapsulate the reason behind the motion, so that is embedded within the motion itself. So that when it is transmitted and when it is documented in our written record, that the public will understand why. And it could be something as simple as this board opposes Bill 50 because it does not yet, or does not clarify that. And just one phrase after that, I think, would make this a much more understandable resolution, if adopted, for posterity. Thank you.
All right, so right now, Board Member McDonald's is going to withdraw his, his, um, motion, and he's gonna make another motion.
Thank you, Chair. So I am now withdrawing my previous motion to support, or to not support Bill 50. And I would like to reintroduce a new motion, uh, saying that this board, again, does not support Bill 50 for the reasons that it sends funds to Waikiki for events that are held in our neighborhood. And additionally, because I believe it's too restrictive of events that might want to be held in Chinatown. But, uh, because of restrictions in the bill, may not, uh, promoters may not want to have their event here. So for those two reasons, I am proposing that this board does not support Bill 50. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Laura Sturgis second in this.
I second.
All right. Do we need any further more discussions, or can we move on?
Just to clarify a vote, aye means that we want this bill rejected. Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Any oppositions to this motion? Motion passes.
Simple.
All right, thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to public concerns. Uh, public concerns is owned, as we know, for the community. Anyone online? No? Anyone in the, um, audience? Good luck.
Hi, I just wanted to give a quick report on our festival that we had last month, Lee Stack with the Chinatown Improvement District. Um, we held it on the 14th in Smithboro Tanya Park. It was a beautiful day. We had a wonderful turnout. Um, uh, one of the organizations we work with did a count every hour, and they estimated about 1,000 people came. So it was fun. A lot of the earnest was there. Chulon stopped by. I don't know if anybody else did. We also hung over 100 lanterns in Chinatown. About 10% of them were specialty lanterns. Uh, most of them ended up being sort of Pokemon characters, which a lot of the businesses like. So it was a lot of fun and a good time. I also wanted to, um, she's not here any longer, but I wanted to thank Chulon for her years and years of service, um, to this board because I think she's been a wonderful advocate for the community, and I think she's been an independent voice. And, um, I think that's hard to do in some circumstances, but I think she's just done a very good job. And, um, I'll miss her on the board.
All right, thank you. Any other, um, community members with any concerns? Okay, before we move on for, for those, go ahead. You guys can come, if you want to do your painting, that's good enough. Go ahead.
All right, first of all, uh, good evening to each and everyone in this table and for the people on the live stream. And hi, my name is Val, and I've been working in Hilton Hawaiian Village for one year and 10 months. So pretty sure everybody here already know that we're on strike, and this is our 10th time already. So we're here for, here tonight because our struggle is for the future of this community and across all the states. Roughly 275 local, five union members live in this district. So we are trying to ensure that the jobs in the state's biggest industry are good, jobs that will allow our families and future generations to live, to afford to live here in Hawaii. Because ever since COVID, uh, hotels statewide have been raising room rates, uh, raising resort fees and parking fees and raising other costs while cutting services. We want to, we want the visitors industry to be successful, but it's not going to be successful if the guests aren't giving and the services that they come here for while paying and more and more. So I'm just gonna share just one experience in, that I've been dealing in house, because I work in housekeeping in Hilton Hawaiian Village. Uh, first of all, it's not that quite easy, really. And I keep hearing on the guest that we are very lucky that we live in Hawaii because it's true that Hawaii is a paradise to each and every one of us. But every year, the taxes always goes up. And a lot of workers here, especially not the people who work in high jobs, like offices or something, like just the regular one who has basically just dealing with mortgage war and just using their paychecks every month just to live here in Hawaii. And one of those things are, of course, uh, my family as well. Because my sister wants to move out in Hawaii because this cost and expensive this, in here in Hawaii is too much already. And I want to stand up for them and be the first one who support them. And I'm pretty sure some of our coworkers too are probably thinking too to move out already. But we are standing strong, doing what we can in the strike that we have for now. Because our state is losing thousands of people every year because it's really true, it's expensive in Hawaii. They're making big profits and giving billions back to shareholders. Hilton Worldwide made 1.14 billion in profits just last year. So just for me and for all my co-housekeeping, my coworkers, we're just asking for support and understanding. We ask that you please do not stay in any hotels that is on strike. Please let people know about what's going on and please join the struggle.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else?
We do have leaflets, um, that we wanted to share with you.
Just a point of order, Chair. I'm sorry, could you repeat your name for the record, just in case I didn't catch it?
Uh, my name is Val Devilla. Uh, it's a big three A L.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. And we, I cannot speak for the board on that, fortunately. But I can't say anything on that right now, yeah?
Yeah, it's fine.
But thank you for what you said.
No problem. You guys have a great night.
I'm gonna take care of this. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other, um, members from the community who would like to speak? Go ahead.
Aloha, Kaku. I'm coming today because there are problems with seniors, which are trying to alight from public buses on Bishop and Ala Kea. The bus stops have been crowded by delivery vehicles, rideshare, and other items. I would ask that the board consider, uh, supporting the creation of a bus lane along Bishop, at least in the first segment, coming from Beritania down to Hotel, and Ala Kea, from King, moving up to Hotel. These areas are difficult as they are, uh, packed with vehicles. And then the bus cannot come, uh, alongside the curb, which makes it difficult for people with accessibility issues to get on or off the bus. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, no, thank you very much.
All right, sir, could you state your name for the record, just so we can note it? I don't think I.
My name is Harlan Canawal Shepherd.
Mahalo. Do we have any other community members who would like to speak? Not seeing none, hearing none. And move on. Actually, we have item seven, elected officials, Congress, Ed Case, Representative, are you here? No, not seeing him, hearing him. We'll move on to Governor Josh Green's representative, Stephen Downs. All right?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Um, two questions, two questions from, uh, from last month's meeting. The first one refers to, uh, was, was asked by Board Member Isokani, wanting to know if the governor was aware of any trend in customs and border protection regarding the use of enhanced screening on visitors from Japan. And the answer is, no, the office is not aware of any such, uh, security measures. The governor just returned from Japan, um, and is promoting tourism along with other ties, uh, to Hawaii. Um, the governor's office is also working on creating a global entry membership for Japanese citizens, which would, um, in essence, avoid the typical entrance reviews and, and allow the bypassing of lines to make it easier for, um, Japanese citizens to come to Hawaii. And they're hoping to, uh, roll out a program in the next two months. The second question, uh, came from, um, Board Member Ly, and this refers to, um, a concrete promenade on the H1 of Bunting Magellan Street. This is a longstanding question. We finally have an answer. Um, it was designed, uh, back when the H1 freeway was being built, um, as a beautification project. They planned to build terrace banks with garden platforms accessible to pedestrians. At one point, architect of Vladimir Osipov was engaged to create a park for pedestrians to be able to look out upon the city. Um, this did not, uh, come to completion. And now the DOT and the Police Department, um, are looking to convert the platforms and beautify the space, which is now apparently being occupied by, uh, homeless encampments, which are regularly cleaned out. So those are the, uh, the two questions. Um, are there any others?
All right, uh, since, uh, Chair Carvalho stepped out, I'll assume his role. Is there any questions for Stephen from the gallery? Any public questions, uh, from anyone online? Seeing done any question, seeing not any questions from the board? Uh, Board Member Isokani?
Hey, Mr. Downs, thank you for your, uh, very detailed responses to our questions. I did just have a quick question. I, I saw an article talking about, um, the US Navy has plans with respect to a small island, Ka'ula, off Ni'ihau. They want to, I guess, double the amount of bombing that they're going to do on this small island. It's houses, birds, monk seals, et cetera. They did, uh, an environmental assessment saying everything's fine. Um, just wondering if we have anyone in the governor's office or department that actually is, you know, looking at these environmental assessments on the public's behalf? Because I know I'm not educated enough to really study them. But, you know, is the governor's office, um, you know, advocating and looking at this on our behalf?
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other questions from any board members? All right. Thank you very much, Stephen.
Uh, just one thing, I will, um, I will not be here next month. I will be, um, out of state, but I'll try to have a representative, um, uh, appear in my stead. And I'll, but I'll send in a report regardless. So, okay.
Hey, thank you, Stephen.
Pardon me? Uh, I can ask. I can ask. Thank you.
All right, so we're on the next one. Representative Ian Sante, please.
Can you hear me, Chief Chair? Yes, okay, thank you, Board Member Ly. Again, Ian Sante, Mayor's Rep. Um, the first time I report is this month's highlight from the Mayor's Newsletter, update on operations and ongoing instructions for the Oahu Rail Transit System. The city unveils A'ala Respite, the newest facility aimed at addressing homelessness. The Honolulu Medical Zamar shows off an upgraded facility. And the second time in 13 months, the city opens a new lifeguard tower and updates on the renovations of Waikiki Shell. The 2024 edition of the Mayor's Newsletter can be found at www.honolulu.gov backslash mayor backslash newsletter. From the Department of Environmental Services, the city's Department of Environmental Services plans to increase the supercharge for all residential and commercial customers in fiscal year 26, which begins July 1st, 2025. Environmental Services wishes to present information at all upcoming neighborhood board meetings on the reasons for the increase, the amount of the increase, and the additional revenue it will be used for. We ask all board chairs to contact Roger Babcock or Michael Keefe at roger.babcock@honolulu.gov or m o keef@honolulu.gov to set up your board presentation. From last meeting, BFS, um, budget and fiscal related to the transit construction mitigation fund. The city is procuring grant management system that will streamline the process for businesses to submit and manage their applications. Once the system is procured, we will be able to provide a timeline on businesses can begin submitting applications when the grant will be awarded. Question again on the, about the update on monitoring for Chinatown Security Camera Network. Um, the Honolulu Police Department is currently seeking processing volunteers to monitor the cameras in Chinatown. Until community volunteers are enlisted, the cameras are being used to aid enforcement operations in the Chinatown downtown area in accordance with revised ordinance Honolulu Section 232.3A2. Authorization for certain overt video monitoring of public activity from fixed locations. A question about the panhandler on South Vineyard and Poli Highway. HPD, from September 18th to the 24th, 25th, District 1 Central Waho Patrol officers made checks throughout the day and did not observe any panhandlers at the intersection. Officers will continue to make checks and take appropriate enforcement action when violations are observed. The safety is of our utmost concern. People, please encourage your constituents to call 911 if they see anything illegal so officers can be immediately dispatched to address the issue. The next question was in regard to legal question, Member Ly. Does the city and county of Honolulu have a policy regulating the presentation of content on personal Facebook or social media pages by elected or appointed officials, which is defamatory against citizens such as officials who be judging part of his or elected position? The Ethics Commission does not accept questions through Mayor's Rep. Reports, as they do not use the DART OneView system, which we employ to track issues, to submit a complaint to the Ethics. Please fill out their intake form at honolulu.gov backslash ethicspublic. Um, the last question is regarded to my department. Uh, Member Ly also brought up a question in regards to an individual that had a medical condition. Um, court is out on the street looking for those individuals right now. Um, we had some challenges with the document, Member Ly. I think they emailed you back that they had opening. So, um, but they are trying to look in the area that you did, we discussed, um, for that individual. And that's all the questions I have at this time.
All right. Do we have anyone online who would like to address the Mayor's Representative, Ian Sante? Not seeing anyone online? Board members, any board member besides, go ahead, Kevin McDonald.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Sante, for being here. Um, I'm interested, this was the, one of the first board member meetings that I've over six years now, um, that the number one, uh, item of concern was not homelessness and the crime associated with homelessness. All, and, uh, I suppose that's good, although it is still a major problem in this neighborhood. Uh, but I am going to address the, the thing that was, that does seem to be the biggest concern for our neighborhood, at least in this particular meeting, which is our local festivals and celebrations that we have in our neighborhood. I meant, I might have asked our city councilman, but I used my question for him for something else. And our chair pointed out, uh, he kind of beat me to it a little bit with the city councilman. And I'll even touch on, uh, I'd like to elaborate on Mr. Fitzsimmons' question for the councilman as well. Um, we are sorely missing our, uh, local festivals and celebrations that we have here in block parties. Uh, and we just had September, which had the Aloha Festival celebration and Aloha Festivals Week. Now, as Mr. Fitzsimmons asked about some of these celebrations, I have been around this neighborhood for quite a while, and I don't recall exactly what happened, that we lost the downtown Ho'olalea for the Aloha Festivals Week. But I remember, uh, it was a while ago, and I remember really enjoying that celebration. But I remember, it was a while ago, and I remember really enjoying that celebration. And we did start the Ho'olaleas in this neighborhood. Why don't we have that back? And why does the city seem to be moving away from, in a direction that's taking us away with items like Bill 50 and other things? The city really seems to be moving in a direction that's taking us away from these celebrations and festivals. Need to help our community thrive and survive. So what happened to the, my question is in two parts. What happened to the Ho'olalea Festival? And why can't we have it back? And why is the city moving away from our festivals and celebrations that we cherish and need in our neighborhood? Thank you.
You're welcome. Board Member Li?
Thank you, Chair. If I could direct to Mr. Sante, I appreciate the detailed report and follow-up. If you could clarify either now or in a direct email, was there a specific bill or legislation that you mentioned about the use of software or specifically surveillance regarding the security cameras in Chinatown?
Yes, it is actually related to the ordinance, revised ordinance of Honolulu, Section 2-32.3, subsection A, subsection 2, authorization for certain overt video monitoring of public activity from fixed locations.
Thank you, Ms. Andy. I hope you can include that reference in the follow-up to my next question, which would be if there was a technical issue with the images regarding the gentleman that we were discussing, let me know why or difficulty opening that. I appreciate that greatly. And then the thirdly, you mentioned pursuing concern that I've raised with the Ethics Committee, state and/or county level, did it appear that they would indeed field such a question as general as that without being specific as far as an individual? Was that your understanding or whoever made the reference of you to me?
You're absolutely correct, Board Member Li. If you have a specific question in regards to this, they said you could actually email them directly at ethics@honolulu.gov for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Sante, for spending your time with us every month. But that reminds me, Board Member Li, observation with respect to the cameras that were placed downtown and the monitoring of it. His suggestion was to perhaps implement some AI software to help assist HPD in monitoring the surveillance cameras. But my understanding was that HPD had planned to depend on community volunteers for that monitoring. Can you give some updates as to who would be monitoring the new cameras that have been installed and reported on today?
I cannot give you very specific, other than what is told is on community volunteers. I can go back to HPD and get you more specific on that information.
Board Member Armstrong, please.
Thank you, Chair. And as a postscript to Sean's comments, then last month, I specifically remember hearing that the Honolulu Police Department has not been trained as to how to administer or observe or surveil those cameras. So to where that is. And I sure hope you're not going to waste a whole lot of time about volunteers, because I thought we had kicked that one definitely into the curb and killed that idea for a variety of reasons. But, you know, I just need to say as a final comment, you know, we've had a lot of, a lot of discussion today about 10 years out, something has been said, and I've been on the board for six years and those kind of comments. But my gosh, we have just gone around and around and around with these cameras. And I almost saw that sign, which is going to be placed in our neighborhood, saying that we have cameras now in our neighborhood, as sort of a slap in our face, because while we've got the cameras, we don't have any power and surveillance behind those cameras. And we're really misleading the public. So I hope we get some handle on this and some definitive answers so we can move forward, because it's exhausting. It really is exhausting.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, seeing no further questions, we're going to go ahead and move on, thank you. Ian Sante, thank you. All right, next, we have State Senate, State Senator Representative, up here. State Senator Carl Rhodes, Representative?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board. My name is Braden Chung, and today I'll be representing Senator Carl Rhodes as a quick little spiel about COVID-19. Basically, a new vaccine has been approved for use. It's meant to protect against severe illness, hospitalization, and death. If you're here at last board, at the last board meeting, should have received this information. And some new information, $825,000 in the capital improvement project funds was released to the Hawaii State Library for a building assessment and master plan. And if you have any questions or bill ideas, please let me know right now, and I can forward that to Senator Carl Rhodes. And please don't hesitate to contact him via phone number or email.
All right, so do we have, anyone have any questions for Senator Carl Rhodes, Representative? And people, please keep it to a minute as we're running out of time here. Okay, thank you.
Hey, how's it going? Braden, hey, how's it going, Braden? Just wondering if Carl Rhodes saw the Supreme Court decision that came down six days ago, Alvin Jardine, that specifically addressed his HRS 661B law that he drafted, which was, you know, we kind of made a big deal about it, about how it was big and ambiguous and how it required approving of actual innocence, and there was no basis for that inclusion, that he, did he question, what his opinions were on the Supreme Court decision that came down? That's about it, that's about it, thanks.
Hey, anyone else, go ahead, Board Member Rossi.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Braden, I think you were here last month. I had asked a question just with respect to which type of legislative reforms the Senator might be pushing for for the upcoming session. Is it preferable that I just email him directly? Or is it your role to take these questions and give us responses in the next meeting?
At this point, I'm going to be honest with you, just email him directly. That probably would be a lot easier. Although I do remember having seen something related to that. Yeah, but I would just recommend you just email him, I'm going to be honest with you.
Thank you, Braden.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again, Braden, for being here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire here a little bit. There were several questions for the Senator at last month's meeting, and I didn't hear anything in your statement to address those questions. And then just to take a little issue with your response to Board Member Issokane just now, one of the reasons that we have these neighborhood board meetings is to have our elected officials here or their representative, so we can ask them these questions in public, in a venue where our constituents can see the question being asked and hear that elected official's response. It's nice to send an email and get a little private response, but I know for me personally, one of the reasons I ask questions and take a lot of time and put a lot of thought into the question that I ask and how that question is worded is so that I can get a response from the elected official that the public can view and see and understand what the official's position is and how they, and how their responses to those issues are. So I hope that you'll go back to the Senator and let him know that this board demands answers at these meetings, and we would like to hear from him in person in this public forum as to how he feels on the questions that we ask of him here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Member McDonald. Any other further questions? Go ahead, Braden.
Oh, sorry, if it's okay if I can respond to that, actually. Is it okay if I respond to that?
Yes, you can respond to that.
Okay, so at this moment, Senator Rhodes isn't actually, he has some family members to attend or family matters to attend to right now. So at this very moment, from my knowledge, until December, he will not be able to attend basically these meetings.
All right, thank you for that. All right, seeing all the questions coming up, we're going to go ahead and move on out of the elected officials with Scott Psyki. Representative Scott Psyki. Then we're going to go ahead and move on out of this elected officials with Daniel Hope. Representative Daniel Hope. All right, now we'll go ahead and move to the quarterly report. Chulashua Quak left. Her report is in the Google Drive, so we'll go next to Neighborhood Citizens Patrol, Kevin Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Out of respect for the part, the eating tonight, I'm going to defer report until later this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome. Next, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Thursday, September 5, 2024, regular meeting, written summary for video record. Go ahead, Board Member Ross.
Thank you, Chair. As your elected secretary, I did read the NCO draft written summary of the video record. Looks sufficient to me. So as your secretary, I would recommend, and I'll make a motion, that we go ahead and adopt the minutes for September 5, 2024, which is composed of the YouTube recording and the NCO draft written summary. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussions. Go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair, for the chance to comment on the motion. At this time, would like to move to amend that to this degree. I'm going to note Neighborhood Plan 214113A5 for inclusion of my comments throughout the night in this discussion. I'm glad that our secretary had a chance to review the draft as drafted by ostensibly our neighborhood assistant. I did want to correct a near homophone that was included in the discussion of the portion of the draft about Resolution 2024-05, again, from last month. The second sentence of that section says the resolution was deferred to next month, and I'm pretty sure it should be the resolution was deferred to next month. And secondly, regarding the description of the Neighborhood Citizen Patrol, just to amend that, so it's a little more inclusive and understandable by the readers of our written record, who might not have access or the ability to locate the video recordings. So I propose the following change, and it incorporates the hyperlink for the report. Neighborhood Citizen Patrol Kevin Li presented images and report observations by the patrol from August 2024, including operations by the core team on Queen on the Street near Kamalu Neighborhood Park, egregious civil rights violations, likely fentanyl-induced base plants, public bus stop takeovers, pallet palaces overtaking entire sidewalks and bike lanes, and perennial illegal feral bird feedings. Li invited the public to continue to walk with the patrol on the second Tuesday of every month, departing at 7:00 p.m. from outside Diamond Head Tower lobby of the Kui Plaza, noting the notorious nature of the event through December 24, 2024. Please bring your friend to camera, draw the patrol, and help identify areas of concern within the community. Thank you, Chair. Those are the key amendments that will, I think, will improve the written record again, which is most often visible to our constituents. Thank you.
All right, so thank you. So what I took from that, and I do apologize, we're having a hard time hearing you on this. And yeah, but what I did take from that is that you just did your Neighborhood Citizens Patrol, correct?
Chair, thank you for that. There was one minor addition in front of that in the discussion of Resolution 2024-05. There was a near homophone displacement from differed to deferred. Thank you.
Go ahead, Board Member McDonald.
So I've worked with Kevin Li on the minutes when I was Chair, and also have seen his amendments to the minutes on many, many, many occasions previously. And while they may be excruciating in detail, I have never found any harm in their addition to our minutes. So I'd like to propose that we confirm the minutes with the added amendments that Mr. Li is proposing. I don't see any harm in them, and I don't, and so I don't know why we can't include them in the minutes.
Go ahead, Board Member Armstrong.
And I second the amendment to the resolution.
Go ahead, Board Member Rossi.
I just object.
First, we have, so any discussions? Any discussions? Go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to discuss. I think that it is important that we have some degree of both accuracy and precision. I think that correction of things that are as discussed here are minor, can be easily done within the applicable file and then republished. And I appreciate the support of the other board members who have expressed such. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay, we're going to go ahead and call for the vote. Yes, on the proposed amendment.
If I may, my, my motion was to approve the minutes with the amendments that Mr. Li will get to.
That's what we're going to vote on, okay?
As amended.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the minutes for September 2024 with the amendments stated. Armstrong?
Aye.
Fitzsimmons?
Issokane?
No.
Li?
Aye.
McCarney, not here. McDonald?
Aye.
Chupacuak, not here. Sturgis?
Aye.
Carvalho? Five ayes, two noes, zero abstentions, the motion is not adopted.
Yeah, five is approved.
One vote?
Sorry, it is adopted.
Okay, so now that that's done, we can go ahead and move on to what was supposed to be the Chair's report, but I think Board Member Li already went over all that. Yeah, because he did, he's saying, he brought up about board vote per Neighborhood Plan, subsection 2-14-111C that he brought up about the meeting minutes. Did you not bring that up?
Chair, I'm sorry, that's a different section of Neighborhood Plan that deals with inclusion of items in the written record. And I think the item on the agenda next is separate.
So as far as this goes, I know you guys want the, how would I explain that? You want us, you want the board to vote on the topic on next regulars meeting agenda to include for next month to be decided by board vote per Neighborhood Plan? Is that what it is?
Chair, if you're addressing me, I'll briefly describe. As you recall, I submitted a request to include on the agenda several items that were not included on the previous month's agenda. And thankfully, they are now on this month's agenda.
Okay, like the timer and all that, right?
I think that is one that's coming up on the agenda. Maybe it's subsection 1 or item A.
Under section 10, number A, sub item 1, that is the
Read that photo of her and her speaker on screen. So you're asking this board?
Chair, may I clarify?
Yes, go ahead.
So Board Member Li, and if I may, Board Member Li.
And I'm having a hard time hearing you over there.
So Board Member Li, before this meeting, submitted written requests to you as Chair asking if these two items, sub bullet I and sub bullet double I, could be included on this month's agenda. You as Chair, I'm thinking you did not want to put it on this month's agenda. But your obligations under Neighborhood Board, this section 2-14-111C, is to have is to have the board vote if we want it in next month's agenda. That's all we're doing.
I just couldn't kind of understand. Yeah, I don't know why, why, why you can't have. All right, so let's go ahead and put item one and
So Chair, all we're doing is we're voting if we want this on next month's agenda. And if we vote yes, then we want it on next month's agenda. If we don't, then it does not get put on.
And yes, and if we put on the board concerns.
As a separate agenda, I.
Yeah, board concern. Yeah, go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to follow from Member Isokane. So the affirmative vote now would be to place these two items, taking them as a joint proposal on the agenda. And if not, then they would go on the subsequent month's agenda. Time pending. Is that correct?
Well, my reading Neighborhood Plan, Mr. Li, is if we don't approve putting this on next month's agenda, it just drops off.
And can be reintroduced. Yeah. And it can be reintroduced, yeah.
Reintroduce it three times or something like that. Yeah, it can be reintroduced.
So if I may, Chair, to be clear, you did not actually place these items on the agenda as they are written on the agenda to discuss this evening.
Chair, may I? Yes, Chair, from what I'm looking at, that is correct. You declined to put these two items on the agenda this evening, but you're required under the Neighborhood Plan to bring it to the board, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to take a vote on this to add it to next month's agenda. I understand that. That I do understand. I'm just having a hard time listening here and just hearing. Yes, you may.
Can I call the question?
Yes, you may. Yes.
Ah, Chair.
Oh, gosh.
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you. Before the question is called, I thought we might be able to discuss the motion itself.
Yeah, okay, so any this. Yeah, we've got eight minutes. That's what everybody's saying. Looks like where you're at, the sun is out, it's sunny out there, and you're having fun.
Chair, may I ask you a question?
Yes, we can discuss. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair, may I ask you a question? What's your recommendation? Do you want this on the agenda or not?
If, if, I have committed myself to say this. If a board member asks me to put something on the agenda, out of courtesy, I will put it on the agenda because it's only fair. So.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. In light of the fact that we now have just seven minutes left in the official time for this meeting, I think maybe it would be best that we defer this vote so that in case, if there's going to be discussion on this matter, we don't have time for discussion now. So let's then defer this vote and discussion to the November meeting. I have a second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Ah, we're going to have a discussion. Any objections? Mr. Li, Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair. Not objecting, just noting that I'm not in a sunny place. I'm in the middle of a typhoon on the island of Taiwan. So appreciate that, but I should survive. Thank you.
Okay, no objections? Okay, so this is deferred to next month. All right, next downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, number 13. Regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday. Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 7th, at 6:00 PM, right here, Akele Okalani Middle School. Rebroadcast of downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board. Number 13 meetings are scheduled on Olelo, 249, every Thursday at 9:00. See everybody next month. You all have a good day. We're done. This is all this hour.